Good evening and welcome to the November 19, 2020, meeting of the Mount Juliet Municipal and Regional Planning Commission meeting. Before we get started with everything as we're moving forward here this morning, or this morning, this evening, sorry about that, wanted to take a minute for a couple of different things. One is to thank Commissioner Giles for his service, and not only through Planning Commission, but also amongst the Board of Commissioners. I've personally known Art probably 20 years around there. We were just sharing some stories as we were sitting up here prior to the meeting, and before Art served our city from the Board of Commissioners standpoint, he and I also served up here on the Planning Commission. And I tried hard to talk him out of it then of running for the Board of Commissioners, but now after 10 years of service, he will be moving forward and getting to talk with him. There's some exciting things that he has in his life, and as we certainly learn, God has true plans for each and every one of us, and we have to trust in His direction that He has for each and every one of us and every given day. So I just want to take a moment and definitely personally thank Art for your friendship, your commitment to the city, and what you've done. You know that we certainly don't agree on everything, but remain good friends, especially on the sidewalks. Art, we will carry you forward on that as best I can, as best I can. Can't be 100% committed. But wanted to yield the floor to Commissioner Giles for just a moment for a few comments.
I appreciate that, Luke. It's been a wonderful, wonderful ride through the years. And sometimes there has to be a break for a lot of reasons. Sometimes we don't know. This past year, I moved an office, or I redid a building for my agency. I own the office, and I didn't know, I couldn't understand why somebody didn't rent it right at first. And this is how God works, and then I'm sitting, and then someone calls me up, and I couldn't understand why it took so long. And then when the tenant got in there and I understood, then it was revealed, because I don't have to worry about the rent comes and COVID didn't hurt it, and et cetera. And when you look back, so he's got a plan, and it was revealed when I lost this election for the Commissioner's seat. We had a ceremony, and something else I need to do was actually confirmed right over there in that corner that night. And so God's in control, and I have no doubt, and I am excited. That doesn't mean I won't be back, doesn't mean I won't run again, doesn't mean I won't be sent back up here again, but for right now, you know, as of right now, this is my last night here for this. I want to thank all of you for your service as well, because it takes a lot to do what we do. Sometimes people don't think it does, but it really does to go through this stuff. I am very serious and passionate about the sidewalks and greenways, and I want to encourage not only that, but our restrictions, our building standards, and all the things that we have implemented is a direct reflection of what you've done. And I want to encourage you to enforce that and make sure that we continue to go on, because if you look where we are today and where we were 10 years as a commission, and what, 2004 maybe is the planning, I'm not for sure, a lot has come, and a lot has grown in this city. And we are enjoying the fruits of what we've done here as far as our building values are concerned today. I don't care what anyone says. I'm also, most people don't understand, and I'm not a good carpenter, but I think I'm a good contractor. I don't do that anymore, but I am licensed, and I've kept my license, and it's in the state as well as a real estate license. But I'm in insurance. But when I was building houses, and when I did own more property than I did, and I kept that, and I would price it very high on the lots, and people thought I was nuts. I wasn't nuts. And it brought the values up in my little area, and what we've done here to make sure that we have great houses here in Mount Juliet has increased the value here, and we're enjoying that. If you bought your house 20 years ago or 10 years ago, I've lived in mine since 1989. So I want to encourage you to continue doing that. People who are coming in, we talked about sidewalks, and we laugh about it, but you know as well as I do, somebody would call and, or they'd say, "That sidewalk's going to nowhere." But look where the sidewalks are going today. We started the BPAC in 2013, and as of today, we, along with Public Works and Traffic and Andy and all the people there, we've netted $9.2 million in grant money. Chris is on the BPAC. And so I want to encourage you, we've really come a long way. What I am for sure going to be involved in in the city, we have started a 501(c)(3) that's called Friends of BPAC. So if anybody's interested in joining that, please do. I'm very excited about it, because what we're going to do is be able to apply for grants as well, just like the BPAC does, and the city, so that we can get additional monies to put little sections in that maybe we don't have for sidewalks or greenways. And it also affords people an opportunity to donate. I've already had someone that has said, "Hey, we want to donate into that 501(c)(3)". And we've got two city employees, and I'm going to try to end this real quick. I brag about you, and I also want to brag about the city staff here in Mount Juliet. This is the only time, I guess, I broke down almost at the last commission meeting, was because we have some of the best city staff, every department, from PD to Public Works to IT to everywhere. I mean, I've just never seen people like this. And so that's another reason our city is so great, is because of staff here in the city, and I thank them. And this Friends of BPAC, we have two, we have two members, one from PD and one from Public Works. And they don't get paid to come to that, although we're just going to meet maybe once every three months. But they don't get paid, but yet they want to be part, because they care about Mount Juliet and where it's going, where it's been, and it's very exciting to see people like that. So I want to encourage you, if you're interested in that organization, to let us know. And again, thank you all for allowing me to participate, and it's been a wonderful ride. If I don't come back, it's some wonderful memories, some funny memories too, some things that's happened. We can tell you a lot, can't we, Luke? So thank you for that time. Thank all of you.
Thank you, Commissioner Giles. Yeah, absolutely. It's not enough that Board of Commissioners, but service on the Planning Commission on top of that, and amongst committees is a huge commitment to our city. Yeah, please.
Yeah, I just want to personally thank Art. You have made this community a better place for us all to live, and your legacy will live on for many years to come. So I thank you for your services to this community.
Yep. Well said. With that being said, unfortunately not here this evening, but Commissioner Parnell not joining the Planning Commission anymore at this time, we do wish him all of the best in everything that is in store for him. So as we move forward to our next Planning Commission meeting, we will have, I believe, or my understanding, that we'll have someone in that seat, and then the Board of Commissioners will have a meeting and appoint a Commissioner to fill Commissioner Giles' seat that will be vacated. I'd be remiss if I didn't say congratulations to Commissioner Malalee on a successful election, Commissioner Hefner on a successful election, and our new mayor, Mayor James Manis, on his election as well. Look forward to working with all of you and as your civil servants, and taking this, continue to move our city forward in the best way that we possibly can. I also got to say a side note, it's my understanding that there's a new gavel, and I don't know what you call that, you tap the gavel on, but it's a new one up here now. I get to tell Mayor Manis that I actually got to use it before him. So, yeah, he's probably going to hold that. So this could be my last meeting as well. Yeah, yeah, it's been a pleasure to be here, and yeah, all of that. So with that being said, we got a lot of people here tonight. Let's get forward, let's move forward with our meeting tonight. With that, do want to talk about quorum, since we do have a lot of people here. The President, "Five Members of the Commission Shall constitute a quorum for the transaction of business. Chairperson may at his or her discretion wait up to 30 minutes after the scheduled meeting time for a quorum to be present. In the event that a member is required to leave a meeting prior to adjournment and the departure causes a loss of quorum, no further official action may be taken until a quorum is restored other than an adjournment. A majority vote of those commissioners present, and in no case less than four affirmative votes, shall be required to decide any item of business requiring action by the commission." And that's one, that's, out of all of that statement, is the most important to realize that no less than four affirmative votes should be required to decide any item on the business. So with that being said, our first item up on the agenda is to set our agenda. I am not aware of any changes, amendments. Commissioner Turner, did you have one?
Yes, on the consent agenda, I would like to pull 3.8 off the consent agenda and have it as a discussion item. That is a review of the site plan for Golden Property located at 45 Main 1 Beckwith Road.
Any objection for anyone to pull that off the consent agenda and hear that as an individual item? Seeing no objection to that, we'll move item 3.8 to the backside of our consent agenda. The final item on the consent agenda is item 3.13. So we will hear at the conclusion of the consent agenda at 3.13, we'll hear 3.8, and then transition to 4.1. Any other changes? With that being said, we will set the agenda as stated. Next item up are our staff reports. Who's going to lead today? Ms. Hamlin, please.
Hello, I won't take a lot of your time, because I feel like we have a parking lot full of people waiting to come in and speak tonight.
Yes, ma'am.
So I just wanted to let you know that some of you are short on your continuing education hours, and we are going to send a link to the last video that was held, so you can get caught up on that. I'm terrible at goodbyes, so I'm going to say, "See you real soon," and thank you very much for your service to the city. We do love you so much, so thank you again. Thank you.
Mr. Bora, or Mr. Bubin, whichever one, please.
I just want to say thanks to Art as well. You know, I'm kind of the new guy here, and Art has always been very, very kind to me and very, very helpful, and I just, thanks for everything. And congrats, Jennifer and James. Thank you.
I did want to give a little update on Public Works on some exciting news for us. A project that we've been working on really since I've come to the city, one of the things that got handed in my lap was, "Let's see how we can fix the odd configuration heading north on Mount Juliet Road at the bridge." And so worked on that. I actually sketched up a plan, took it to TDOT, and they said, "Looks good, let's build it." And four years later, here we are, we're starting construction the week after Thanksgiving. So very excited about that. And so very excited to see that. Just be patient, there's going to be some lane shifts, some lane changes. They tell me that they're not going to close any lanes except overnight on this job, so, but if we have any issues, maybe we could adjust. The completion timeframe on that is going to be May of 2022. You'll see the majority of the work done throughout next year, however. So you're going to see a lot of stuff going on. The bridge work will be going on over the winter, which is always exciting. Also Lebanon Road sidewalks, we're progressing very well on that project on the south side. I'll take this thing off while I'm up here. And so progressing very well on that. And to that point, that's another grant award that the city won. I can't tell you how many grant awards we've won. I came to the city in 2014, and not long before that, Art had started the BPAC. And with the perfect storm that we've had over the last six-plus years, it's been me coming in with a desire to want to see these things. Obviously, we have traffic woes, but we also have a big need for active transportation. We can see with Town Center Trail just recently finished here this year, just how needed that was. I knew it, I could see it, I wanted to have it happen, but I couldn't do it by myself. And I couldn't do it without the support of Art leading the charge on the commission, the Planning Commission. We've not only done public projects, but we've taken a lot, we've put a lot of responsibility on developments as well. And so we've achieved a lot in that time, and, you know, we make the recommendations, but Art's been carrying the flag on that. Thank you to the Planning Commission as well, Board of Commission members outgoing and incoming. This is a great city, I'm proud to work here, and I'm proud to have worked alongside Art. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I noticed tonight for the first time, just amazing how the face of things changed, but the first time I've seen the vintage Station North sign lit up at nighttime, and still can look over there and see the old S&amp;S building. So it's definitely different, definitely different. All right, our next item up on the agenda is our citizen comments. This time, we will take citizen comments. Public is welcome and encouraged to make public comment about any item on our agenda. There'll be two opportunities for comments. You may speak now, or you may speak when the item is presented to the Planning Commission. We do ask that you limit your comments to three minutes or less, and that anyone that wishes to address the Planning Commission is welcome and encouraged to do so. And as we pause here for a second, we are, for the first time in four months, five months, six months, I can't even remember how many months now, we are going to take citizen comments in person. So bear with us as we figure out this process as well. Come on in. Yeah, you have the floor. Name an address for the record, please.
When a police officer with a gun says, "Stop here," I stop there.
Yeah, I don't blame you at all. Name an address for the record, please, sir.
Okay. Reverend Fred Polacek, P as in Peter, O-L-A-C-E-K, Hickory Hills.
907 Graham, gotcha. What may we do for you, Reverend?
Well, I'll spare you the offering this time. Speaking in regards to the Kane Brook subdivision proposal, I feel like it's a situation in which trying to go upstream in a canoe with no paddle. But here's what I'm thinking about the situation. The Planning Commission should present or propose to the developer, the owner, a position of safety for the citizens of Mount Juliet. Currently, we have a residential road. The proposal that access to and from that subdivision be through Devonshire would change that road to a high-volume road. And with the high volume comes greater risks for the children and others in that subdivision. I am thinking that proposal to the land developer-owner should be that Devonshire, to handle this increased volume, should be changed from the current two lanes and a turning lane to four lanes. And also that the, this would be at the expense of the proposed developer-owner. Also, at the cost of the owner-developer would be sidewalks on both sides of Devonshire, from Lebanon Road all the way down to the city limit. As you all know, currently, there are no sidewalks there, and that certainly would be an increased safety value. I live on a road that's a cul-de-sac, basically. Volume is not much, but we do have children, you know, playing in the streets.
One minute.
Pardon?
Yeah, one minute.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know. But I think that's the suggestions that I would have for this body. Safety is primary, widen the road, sidewalks on both sides. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Name an address for the record, please.
Absolutely. My name's Matthew Baffernuth. I live at 1331 Georgetown Drive, and that's also in Hickory Hills subdivision. As regards the Kane Break, I'm just wondering, I know once it rains with the springs, we're right at the end of Georgetown Drive, right where the wooded area is, and when it rains, we get terrible flooding that comes through the woods there when those springs start overflowing. And I was just wondering if the developer could just go over some of the ideas that they have to prevent further erosion, because once that's all clear-cut, there's just going to be more rain issues coming through there. So I just wondered if we can get some ideas of how they might stop that from happening, because I only see that getting worse as they start to build.
That's a good point. Yeah, we'll make sure that we bring that up when they come before us.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. With that being said, we'll move on to our next agenda item, and that is the item 2.1, the Planning Commission regular meeting minutes from October 15th of 2020. Any changes, corrections, adjustments, amendments, typos? Seeing none at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion in regards to that item on our agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion in a second, I'll let you pick that one. The second was too close on that. It's a motion in a second for approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye. Against abstentions? So approved. All right. Next item on our agenda is our consent agenda. We'll begin with item 3.1, Mount Juliet Commons Phase 1, Section 4A Development Letter of Credit number TFTS 980490, and the amount of $79,251.03 can be released. Item 3.2 Speedway LLC Development Letter of Credit numberSLCMMSP07491, and the amount of $308,961.08, and Sewer Letter of Credit numberSLCMMSP07492, and the amount of $54,828 can be released. Item 3.3 Town Homes of Hickory Hills Phase 1 Development Letter of Credit number16517867131, and the amount of $180,923 can be released. Item 3.4 Walton's Grove Phase 1 Sewer Letter of Credit number90021025, and the amount of $60,618 can be released. Item 3.5 Review the Final Platte for Kelsey Glenn Phase 8, located at Oxford Drive. Item 3.6, which is a recommendation item back to the Board of Commissioners, is to review the rezone request for 808 and 830 North Mount Juliet Road. Item 3.7 Review the Site Plan for the Arnold Investment Building located at Sunset Circle. Item 3.9 Review the Site Plan for MTEMC Substation located East Division Street. Item 3.10 Review the Final Master Development Plan for the 711 at Golden Bear, located at the corner of Golden Bear Gateway and Volunteer Boulevard. Item 3.11 Review the Site Plan for the 711 at Golden Bear, located at the corner of Golden Bear Gateway and Volunteer Boulevard. Item 3.12, which is a recommendation item back to the Board of Commissioners, it is to review the Parkland Purchase of the Tate Lane Property. Item 3.13, which is also a recommendation item back to the Board of Commissioners, review the Public Works Land Purchase for the Clemens Road Property. Ms. Hamlin?
Thank you. Staff recommends approval or positive recommendation for all the items listed on the consent agenda with the associated conditions. I did want to give you a quick update on the Middle Tennessee Electric Substation. They actually did not have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Our attorney deemed them as essential public communication and utility services under communities facilities, which is allowed by right in industrial. I believe we do have some citizen comments that would like to speak, so if you don't have any questions for me, I was going to go get those individuals.
I've got two real quick for you. Um, I just want to make sure, 3.5 on Kelsey Glenn Phase 8, I know that Kelsey Glenn continues to grow, just looking at that phase, we got several hammerheads for future connection. We are getting those future connection signs all in place out there.
That's required, yes, sir.
Okay. I just want to make sure that those were going up. Got one more, bear with me real quick as I sort through my packet. Okay, my question was on the item 3.6, which is a recommendation item on 808 and 830 North Mount Juliet Road. My nickels worth, and I guess when Commissioner Giles falls off this, I guess I will officially have tenure up here, not over Commissioner Franklin, because he was our city planner at one point prior to me being here. But, yeah, you got, the, one of my concerns with this is that the applicants request the CTC zoning to allow more options in their tenant spaces. Restaurant and retail would not be allowed under their current zoning classification.
OPS does not allow.
So what we're, so we're bringing them, so that what they're currently, or what they're asking for today still would not allow?
Correct. The restaurant and the retail. They're wanting to combine the two lots together and build one building on two lots combined.
Okay, but we're, but that zoning, I guess that was my biggest concern, is just making sure, because I remember as those houses developed out to what they are now, commercial, and then what they were prior to the tornado, and then at one point, we had the wall, or fencing or whatever.
It was a wall, a brick wall, and that regulation has been relaxed to allow the wooden fence in your typical Class D buffer.
Okay.
The land use does support the rezone to CTC.
Okay, but no retail or restaurants or anything else?
In OPS, that's not allowed, their current district. In commercial town center, the requested zoning, restaurants and retail is allowed a permitted use.
That would be?
So you would have something similar to Cellar Station.
That would be my concern with, I guess this one right here is trying to give it a positive recommendation, just simply because, I mean, those folks back there behind them, I guess Barrett Drive is directly behind that, but I mean, they haven't gone through enough with the tornadoes, and then now we're going to throw a Burger King in there.
Well, it won't be a Burger King, right.
It's going to be something with the possibility to have late hours, something with the possibility to have food trucks, dumpsters, 18-wheelers, which Office Professional does not.
Right, they do have the occasional trash truck issue, but that's typically it.
The dumpster pads and everything else are going to be relocated back there, and all of a sudden, the fence is a joke, you know, and you really can't, with our setback requirements, you're still not going to be able to require or get a good enough buffer between them and the people behind them. And so, you know, I understand what they're wanting to do. I personally don't know that I can say, especially after as much work as we did through that area right there to get where we are, and to get it Office Professional, get it so it's not an intrusive use over there to those homeowners, because also survived that paddocks development, as you did, and everything that we got pushed back on that, and we gave them a great buffer system over there. But they're just not capable of doing that kind of a buffer on these properties here, so.
Yeah, I understand, and I struggle with the same concerns, but they do front Mount Juliet Road, and the land use does support the request, and so that's why we offered the positive recommendation. We are sensitive to the tornado victims, and in fact, these businesses are victims as well. So they just want to rebuild bigger and better, and just like the people behind them. But I am sensitive to them. I grew up here, so I totally understand where they're coming from.
If we gave them this, can we make restaurant, retail a conditional use, where they'd have to come back and get it approved?
No, that would only be allowed during a PUD, the PUD process.
That's right.
You can't have conditional zoning.
Okay. Those are my. Okay. Those are my questions. Did you have some? Please, Commissioner Giles.
I may feel a little different about this. People were running out of space in Mount Juliet, close to the interstate. We are. And if, 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 I know when, and it was, it was before my time that that, that was a condition, that you had to put that, that fence back there, the brick wall. Jim Bradshaw introduced the, and got that legislation passed so that it could be the wood wall. I mean, the wood fence. And I said something the other day, I know some people on that street behind, obviously is, was, was very against a lot of the, the commercial. And someone made, brought to my attention the other day that most of the people now on that street are new people who's moved in, are building new houses or whatever. So a lot of those people are not there. They sold their lot, so they understand. One of the things, when we almost got a Dunkin' Donuts up at the end, and if I had my time to go over, I would have voted. The only reason that I did not vote for that was because I didn't want anybody to say that he did that to increase the value of my property. That's the only reason. And my property did not touch that. So I could, I could have legally voted for that. There would not have been a conflict of interest. But I, I chose not to do that. If I had it to do over, I would have done that. We missed out on that, that first building right there, right past Lowe's, you know where I'm talking about. And because of that today, we do not have cross-access. Somebody say amen back there, Andy. We do not have cross-access because that, so people can get out of the light. Okay, so when I come out of my business, I have to turn right and go turn around. I can't go across and turn out the light. It's inevitable that this is going to come. And where else, and I think maybe our mayor or someone else said, where else can you bring stuff on a five-lane, four-lane road with, with a turn lane? So I think that we need to strongly consider what's going to come. And I think this is good planning that we, that you will be doing. I also want to say that as a, as a suggestion, that what we may do, and I've, I've passed this along to maybe a commissioner or two or some other people. When the tornado hit my business, it destroyed my fence, as most of you know. And so when I put the fence back, instead of just putting a regular Class D buffer, one row of fence, I totally enclosed mine in. So I have a gate to get in. I would suggest that CTC, this is one of the conditions you could put on, is, and have the whole Class D buffer fenced. And then not only would you have two rows of, of fencing going the whole width of the, of the lot, then you would have your Class D buffer vegetation, your trees and stuff on the inside. So that's another layer. And that should, I think that should appease people on the next street. So I didn't have to do that. I'm the first that did that. I did it for a whole different, another reason. It was called safety. And then whatever happened last night was going on, somebody running around. I thought I could go back in there and they could be back in there. I'm going to put, I'm going to put a lock on the door. I mean, the gate after last night. So that's something that I would like to recommend you think about, or us going forward. Well, y'all going forward, that we enclose that Class D buffer. And that, that would probably be up to discussion. Maybe there's some cons against that, I don't know. But I can see, all I can see are pros on it. As, as, so I just think it's inevitable that it's going to happen down through there. And with good planning, we could make it really good with the cross-access on some of them and et cetera, et cetera. So just FYI.
Further questions or comments from the commission?
I have something. With the Arnold property, I just want to say, because I know y'all are here, that I appreciate the design of this building and location. And it's always a great thing when the city, we can see a local merchant or business be able to branch out. And just appreciate the time and everything that you guys have put into this. I think that's going to be a real credit to our community.
Any further questions, comments from the commission? Let's bring them on, please. This time we'll call for citizen comments regarding any item on the consent agenda. Please come onto the microphone and name and address for the record.
My name is Robert Schmidt. I live at 1419 Barrett Drive. And 3.6 rezoning Mount Juliet Road. It was bad enough when we turned it into offices, but once we got it into offices, it, we realized that that was probably pretty decent for us, if anything. But the one thing that I don't want to see is restaurants. Restaurants bring varmints and other stuff that go along with it, and we don't need that. There's nothing wrong with what was done there. It, I live right behind Arts, Arts Property. And he put up the two fences and that, that's worked out really nice. I now have, I now have a barrier there. And whatever he does on the other side of it doesn't, doesn't, doesn't mean that much. But his house is, is only house high. I know OPS can be 35 feet. But, but, but OPS got changed from what it was when we, when we, when it was zoned for office space, because it's OPS is CTC minus 5%. So CTC is, my understanding is that, that you want to put a restaurant on that facility? Is that, is that what I'm understanding?
It just allows for a restaurant.
Yes, because that, I, I wish y'all would really think about that. I've been living there for, for 43 years. Charlie Parrish didn't come down tonight, but Charlie's been living there for five years more than me. Don Vickers has been living there for five more years than me. And we all still live on Barrett Drive right there. And they're, both of them are rebuilding their houses as much nicer houses than they started out with. And, and the last thing we need is to be fighting, fighting the kind of things that go along with a restaurant. And I would appreciate that y'all would understand that we've been there. When I moved here, the population was 8,000 people. And I know that we've grown, but it doesn't seem to me that we need to put that kind of thing in that space where affects people who have lived here all those years. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chief.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Next, please.
I'm with the 3.7. The engineer for Arnold Investment.
Okay. Do we have any other citizen comments back there? We closed? We good?
He's actually the engineer for a consent agenda item.
Perfect. All right. Sounds good. Great. Thank you. With that being said, we will close our citizen comments. Do, this time we will close our, real quick, multiple agending up here. There we go. Need to close our Planning Commission meeting in order to open a public hearing. The public hearing is in regards to Item 3.5, which is review the final plat for Kelsey Glenn Phase 8 Located at Oxford Drive. Anyone wishing to make comment on this item during the public hearing is welcome and encouraged to do so.
Thank you. I actually don't have a citizen comments, but just for the record, I would like it added that our police department checked to make sure that nobody outside wanted to speak on behalf of 3.5.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. That being said, we'll close our public hearing, reopen our Planning Commission meeting. And I am looking for a motion in regards to the items on our consent agenda.
I'll make a motion for possible approval, for approval and possible recommendation of the consent agenda.
It's a motion. A second. Motion and second by Commissioner Cersey. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Against? Abstentions? So approved. Next item up on our agenda is Item 3.8. Item 3.8 is review the site plan for the Golden Property Located at 4591 Beckwith Road. Ms. Hamill?
Thanks. Again, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on staff reports tonight due to time. I believe our engineer that's representing this project is in the lobby.
Please.
And I believe those questions should be addressed to her from the questions that I've received prior to the meeting.
That'd be great. Thank you. We recognize you even with the mask on.
Even with my mask on?
Yes.
Jessica Gore, Para Design, 2055 North Mount Juliet Road.
Commissioner Turner?
You know, so the only reason why I pull this off consent agenda is, you know, I've spoken to Jessica. And, you know, my only concern is, is the circulation, and it really has to do with the drive-through. You know, I don't know if there's anything that can be done about it, but I just want to go on the record and just to say that with COVID situation going on, restaurants closing, more people going through drive-throughs, not being able to go into the restaurants, but going through drive-throughs. And then with this place coming up and all the different warehouses and office buildings on Golden Bear, there's going to be, I believe, a large demand for this drive-through. And I know that our regulations are, only require five cars of stacking. Perhaps we're behind the times because now we have COVID situation going on where restaurants are closed and drive-throughs are open. A lot of drive, a lot of restaurants are putting in two lanes of drive-through. And I just believe that if, if we have more than five cars in this drive-through, that's going to cause some major circulation problems with people trying to get in out of the back parking lot. And so for that reason, I'm going to have to vote no for this. And I just wanted to make myself known on public record for that. And that's all I need to say.
Would you like to?
Want to talk about it?
Yeah, please. Talk to me.
Listen, I did speak with Chuck. We talked, talked at length about it and how we had made several accommodations to the site. There, there is a lot going on here. I would call your attention to the fact that, you know, there's a huge transmission line easement that impedes the site. You know, we're under three acres. There's a lot of Greenway Trail going in with this project on Beckwith, as well as Golden Bear. Another surprise of this applicant was the fact that when the traffic study came back, there was considerable backup on Beckwith Road. We, we worked through that with staff. Quite honestly, we were really surprised at the, the backup. It, it moved from a D to an F. And that's why we are agreeing to, at staff's recommendation, to do the temporary traffic signal. Andy said best case, he didn't really want that there long-term. But we do know this area is changing a lot. And the applicant agreed to do that. We, we have really done a lot with this site as far as trying to maximize what we have and for them to get a value, you know, for what the investment is going to be. This zoning allows for eight pumps, but we could not get that on there. Of course, they're taking a financial hit for that. We are meeting the code with the five-car stack. We actually can accommodate eight cars. So while I understand the, the concern about the stacking, about COVID, about takeout, I mean, there, there's a possibility that they could retrofit and mark some of those rear spaces for pickup during time like that. I don't think that this is going to be the norm. I don't think all of our drive-through restaurants are going to keep their dining rooms closed. There are a lot of restaurants, as you guys well know, that are doing some temporary pickup. You know, we want to accommodate. We've tried to accommodate staff's comments. But this site is, is, is pretty challenging for what they're trying to get on it. And, and again, for, for under a three-acre site, it's not so much for, you know, a larger track or a larger subdivision to put some big infrastructure in. But for a three-acre site, this is, you know, a signal, much trail. It's, it's quite a bit. It's quite a bit.
The, I know I had some questions, or this was part of that master plan that was once approved, or this particular, much larger parcel on that master plan when we saw it.
The Gorney property?
Yeah, two, what, two, three years ago, probably?
It's been at least that long. This is just south of that. This was not included in that PUD.
Okay. So, and I know you'll be familiar with it as well. But just the Beckwith Road crossing right there, then your back access back there to Golden Bear. What do we see happening with particularly the Beckwith Road portion of that down the road?
Okay, what, what I will tell you is, and this has been discussed with this client as well before they made the purchase. We did meet with staff and Andy, and of course, I had a little bit of background on that. When the large PUD property develops, they are planned to reroute Beckwith Road to a new signalized intersection on Golden Bear. You guys are going to see something sooner rather than later on the location of that based on the legacy point property that had come in, the 85-acre track. They're going to come through with a preliminary plat before long, and that will set that location of where that connection will be. But when this side does their part that connects, what's going to happen at this temporary intersection is there's going to be a right-in, right-out only.
At this access point on the Golden Bear?
At this access point. And, and so that's kind of even more of a hit for them to have to put a signal in. It's going to be temporary. They know that. They're still willing to do that. They believe in this, this location. They're very excited to be here. I don't know if you've seen the elevations. I was very pleased with the way they looked. And I told them, you know, from being on staff at one time, that, you know, they would have to bring something that was very appealing, that the standard would not be accepted, that they might have done in other places. So I, I think they're trying to make some accommodations that will be acceptable.
This might be a question back for staff as much. When we remove that temporary stoplight and get a future really quote-unquote dedicated access point, which I'm assuming is going to be further north, as, as we saw it at one point in time. We got a lot of new people that probably did not see that. But it'll be further north. So when that does happen and we take it to the right-in, right-out, that was part of that initial design, who will pay to close the mouth back up? Will that be part of a future PUD?
Yes, and that's actually already a condition of that PUD. And so it carries with the land as it comes through. Obviously, you know, if they came through with the development as they had it proposed, tomorrow with an FMDP, they would institute that. That's part of their approvals. You know, if they came in potentially a revised PUD, we just can, can, we'd carry those considerations forward in the, in the revised PUD documents. So with that put also, I will note, they did have improvements to the ramp just south of this property that are actually being done by the Amazon PUD. So there's actually some things already being done out there out of that PUD. Obviously with this, the big issue for us is, these signals are going to be very close. So that is huge for us, that this has to be temporary. We've already seen some other site plans, preliminary plats, et cetera, out there to take this signal further away to an appropriate spacing. If you have these two closed, it's going to, you know, these are going to have to be heavily synchronized. But it is, similar to the south side of the interstate, we did something similar, where when a, a larger connector roadway to the south comes in, that signal will come out.
And so just like at Green Hill, we just basically terminate the signal and then move the signal to its appropriate point, as we've done up on Luden Road with the new Green Hill High School.
That's exactly correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Questions, comments? Thank you so much. This time we'll take citizen comments in regards to this item on the agenda. Any citizen wishing to make comment are welcome and encouraged to do so. Good, all right. See no citizen comments this time? Like to ask for a motion in regards to this item on our agenda? It's a motion. I'll second that. It's a motion in a second for approval subject to staff comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye. Aye. Against. Extinctions. So approved. All right. Next item up on our agenda falls underneath the land use map amendment. It's item 4.1, which is review the land use plan amendment for 3073 Curd Road. Just moment.
Thank you. This is on Curd Road. It's a west side. It's not far south of Lebanon Pike. It's maybe, I don't know, 600 feet or so. It's currently zoned RS 20. It has a single-family house on the site. It's about an acre, the lot. They wish to amend the future land use map because as it stands now, it is, it calls for a neighborhood commercial classification. So they're asking for high-density residential in this instance to eventually, the goal would be to rezone to RS 10 so that they could subdivide the property as shown in that exhibit that was on, you know, at your spot there along the, on, on the table when you came in. This presents a couple, other than not being, you know, in line with the future land use plan, the size of the lot and the way in which it is shown to be subdivided results in a flag lot, which does not meet the minimum requirements for a flag lot, which primarily have to be two, two acres minimum. So we're talking about three tenths of an acre, maybe. So there's a couple of issues, you know, with that. And also it's the land use map. It's not congruent with that. So staff is not recommending approval of said future land use amendment. And that is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the commission? Let's go ahead and ask for, I think, representation in this project. Come to the microphone, name and address for the record.
My name is Anna Bracewell. I'm the owner. 4230 Highway 231 South is my personal address, but this is 3073 Curd Road, Mount Juliet.
Tell us a little bit about what you wanted to do.
So I bought this property last year in August and am planning to move there soon. It has a really big, what I consider a really big side yard that has a lot of road frontage directly facing the Parish Place subdivision, which is all RS 10, though the future land use map at the time that that was developed allowed RS 10 to fall into the medium-density designation. So I basically am wanting to cut approximately 13,000 square feet and change, subject to survey and all of that, off to, as a build lot, either to build on it personally or sell it to a builder for development. So, and then leave, that would leave around 17,000 square feet and change, give or take, with the existing property.
Questions? I guess I got a question, a couple of questions lead back to staff on this. 13,000 square foot would become basically a quarter-acre lot is what you would get. The driveway access would be to Curd Road or the driveway access would be back through an access easement through your flag lot property?
I, I would anticipate a new driveway with a new property and not a shared access with the existing. There is a house behind the subject that does have a shared access with that driveway. But I would not, I, I mean, I'm open to suggestion, but I, my anticipation would be that it's completely separate, so.
Is the property that is behind it right there? I mean, looking at it from its aerial, you have one, two, three. I guess if you include the pool, it looks like it's got to pull four accessory structures on it. Is all of that going to remain?
The property, are you saying my subject property? I don't know what's back behind. So there are, the aerial here, I think there, it was taken at the time I was doing some demo. So there's a dumpster, so that's, that's gone. There is, there are two garages which will remain. There was also a gazebo that has now been taken off. So there will be basically those three structures, the house and two garages on the subject property, so.
I guess one of, one of my immediate questions really looking at this would be in order to create a larger lot and one that would, looks like it would probably get you away from the flag lot requirement, would be to get rid of that first accessory structure there and make that just one total buildable lot, probably looking at the equivalent, probably be a plus or minus 13,000 square foot lot itself, which would then encompass just the house, that garage, and what was probably an old gazebo that you said that you've removed back there, which does make a whole lot of more sense because I'm assuming that's an access easement for a private drive back there which services that house and then the house to the back.
Yes.
Then at this point in time, we could get proper driveway separation out there on the Curd Road and then just make that one lot, which whether or not you choose to personally build on it or whether or not you choose to sell it, even though you're kind of demoing and getting rid of a maybe functional garage, makes it a much more marketable property and would probably remove us from that flag lot requirement, allowing you to probably do what you would like to do.
Sure.
And then in the scope of rebuilding, should you want to rebuild, you would be able, I believe, within city codes and just having to adhere to your setbacks, be able to do your building with possibly a detached garage. You'd have to check with building codes about that.
Sure.
Have you given any thought to that?
Yes, and I, I believe that I have discussed that option maybe with you or another member of the commission. I am open to that if that is the only route that we can go. Landlocking the existing house, which would, is becoming my house, my personal residence, is not my favorite idea for, for obvious reasons. Even though there is, there would presumably be an easement and I guess I can write that however I want if I'm the one dividing it and stuff, but.
You would. Because that private drive is service, serving the house behind you. So I would assume that there's an existing access easement right there.
Correct, yeah.
So it'd remain that property and not necessarily that you got to create a straight line there adjacent with your driveway. I mean, you can jog it out and create more yard if you're keeping the house behind it.
Sure.
But it does make it a, I would assume, I'd have to ask staff this question, but all of a sudden, you, not high-density residential, we're just allowing a single tap and a change in the rezon request to, what a, what zoning class? I mean, what does that do if she, if she were to do that?
Feel free.
What, so this is the future land use amendment at the moment.
I guess I'd like to see it both brought in together. I mean, not only a land use plan amendment, but a, you know, if, if it were rezon request two, is that what would be required here? If, if she weren't to do it as a flag lot and weren't to go to high-density residential?
Well, the, the RS 10 request or it would have, for what she had proposed right now, it, that would be what it would have to be to get the smallest, you know, to have enough, to be able to go as small as that lot has to be.
Underneath its current configuration.
Current configuration, and that is the, the future land use would accomplish that. The change would facilitate that to that low, or that higher-density residential. But it's, yeah, it is, it's an unusual, it would be an unusual layout. And those, there's two, there is two lots that are, you know, they're landlocked essentially to the west of here. I don't know how this would negatively affect that, but it just, it's interesting. And then, then there's accessory buildings in the front yard, which we don't typically permit. The flag lot, it would require a variance and there's no hardship that naturally exists here. That's just staff's take on it, so.
So no matter what she would do, she would still create that flag lot requirement for us to get past it?
Right. It, it would be difficult and then.
I guess I look at the, that drive and when it's servicing, serving multiple houses, a little bit different than a single drive that creates the quote-unquote flag lot. To me, it's almost a private drive, i.e. a small road and not necessarily a driveway if it's servicing multiple houses back there. I mean, just kind of mind the nickel.
It's, it's service, it, it's, it's a shared driveway for two houses right now. The houses north have, have, have another driveway that they share.
Hang on real quick, let me find you on here. I gotta get used to the microphone, please. Commissioner Franklin?
The problem with the way it's come in is it's, it's, it's almost, I mean, you're requiring one, two, three, four different votes by three different boards to all have to go one, one way, including the Board of Zoning Appeals. The odds of that is just
Slim to none.
Very, very low. I think for, for that to ever happen, I would say, just as an odds thing. And then, then you, you'd have to be able to do it. I don't know that you can legally subdivide it off a private drive in its current configuration. I think you have to have 50-foot of road frontage either way, right?
Makes sense.
May I address your, you mentioned reconfiguring to, I, I think I understood your intention was maybe to avoid the rezoning, which kind of would solve all of the problems, but the, the lot total is.
Yeah, it doesn't sound like that'll work though.
Right, the lot, the total lot is only like 31,000, so it, it's going to split it at all.
Kind of null and void that.
Right, so.
Yeah. I guess I was trying to look for some guidance for you on that and unable to, to really find some common ground. That being said, further questions or comments from the commission? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. This time we'll take citizen comments in regards to this item on the agenda. Any citizens wishing to make comment are welcome and encouraged to do so. Please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Any on this one?
Hi, I'm Lori Ramone. I live at 315 Gilly Road and I'm here to hear about the rezoning on Bender's Ferry. The house on Gilly is also included on.
Can I back you up one second?
Uh huh.
Bear with me just a few.
Sure.
Let me get to that one.
Okay.
We're not on that one yet.
Okay.
Hang tight with me.
Cool, no problem.
Yes, ma'am. Anybody for the Curd Road that we're currently hearing at this moment? Nothing? All right. With that being said, I am looking for a motion in regards to item 4.1 on our agenda as to review the land use plan amendment for 3073 Curd Road.
Make a motion for a negative approval.
It's a motion and a second by Commissioner Franklin. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye. Against. Extinctions. So approved. Next item on our agenda is a recommendation item. Just to make sure I'm correct, this is a recommendation item not to the Board of Commissioners, but to the Wilson County Planning Commission.
That's correct.
That is correct. So this is a recommendation item back to the Wilson County Planning Commission and not our City Board of Commissioners. It's item 5.1. It is a review, the rezon request for 2850 Bender's Ferry Road.
Thank you. Loos design on behalf of their client. Universal Builders is seeking a rezon request for the property that's located in the county, not the city limits, but is located within our UGB for 2850 Bender's Ferry Road. It's approximately 299 acres. I have been working with the county planner on this and he has provided a staff report for you guys that was included in your packets. Under the current cluster provision found in the Wilson County zoning ordinance, the current zoning would allow 244 single-family lots. So it's currently zoned A1. They're asking for R1, which would allow 391 single-family homes on the 299 acres roughly. They may lose a few due to the bulk standard requirements and other right-of-way issues. This does fall again in our UGB. It does meet our land use plan. Staff does recommend approval. I know that the county has posed issues and concerns of certain areas along Highway 109 due to the lack of infrastructure there on 109. Those improvements are currently underway. And in speaking with the developer for this project, it's a 20-year development and that's exactly why we have chosen to give a positive recommendation due to the less impact on a road that is inadequate because on completion of this development, Highway 109 hopefully will be done. And I believe that they have representation here to speak as well.
Does this, let me ask a quick question for you, Sadam. Does this include improvements at Bender's Ferry and Lebanon Road?
Well, I think we're a little premature for that. We wouldn't ask that of this development. The county commission would ask those requests. This same developer has done significant improvements currently to Lebanon Road and Bender's Ferry due to the Silver Springs development that he has on that road.
But we could make it part of our recommendation back to the Wilson County Planning Commission that they consider widening and improvements at that access point.
I think you can certainly make that in part of your recommendation.
Very well, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Borlow, anything you guys wish to include on this one?
I will make a note on your comment about the improvements there at that intersection. At the point in time that they would come back for a, I guess it'd be a preliminary plat, it would come before the planning commission, same as what we have Kane break here before us tonight. Our subdivision regulations would require traffic study as part of that. So if we, if we deem that to be a critical intersection, a study intersection would be part of that as well. I will say that the state, we're working with the state on improvements out there, which would include improvements at that intersection. But obviously that's going to be five years or so out before that's done. But I don't know what the timing is for this builder. So, but at the point in time that they would come back to us, they would have to provide a traffic study.
So this might be back from Ms. Hamlin. We would see, what we're seeing right now is the rezon request. So should that pass the Wilson County Planning Commission, then it still comes back to us for preliminary plat, but as a recommendation item back to them?
No, we control the subdivision regulations in the UGB, so we would have sole responsibility for the preliminary plat and final plat for this development. They will get a sketch plat approved at the county planning and that just gives them the density that they're asking for. That, that is sort of like the PUD process for them.
And so then a preliminary plat is where we could address multiple accesses, lot configuration?
Very similar to the next project on our agenda, yes.
And even though if we were to approve that preliminary plat, the development would be overseen underneath city Mount Juliet regulations, but yet the building of the houses would be underneath Wilson County?
They won't pull any permits with us. We won't inspect any of their roads. We will inspect road improvements done in our jurisdiction in the city limits.
So do we have a enforceable mechanism? I guess that, that's where I look back to the question.
Typically, we would tie that into a CO. Certain road improvements have to be done by the 150th or whatever CO. We will not have that mechanism. So that's something that we need to talk to the developer tonight and see what they're willing to do or it may just be premature, to be honest with you. But I think it's definitely worth the conversation tonight while they're here. But they won't pull any permits with us at all.
Mr. Marchetti?
Just very quickly, only thing before us tonight is whether or not the zoning is in compliance with our land use map, which it is. And I think that's what, everything else is deferred to whenever, whoever, however. So, but anyway, that's all we're here for tonight.
Perfect. Commissioner Franklin, something?
Yeah, I'll get the vote on this again, and I'll be voting against it, and I'll tell you why. Yeah, it is, it is consistent with our land use plan, but the whole idea of Chapter 1101 back in 98, and the reason that it is in our jurisdiction to plan for this area is we're supposed to plan infrastructure for the area. We're supposed to plan the urbanization of the outside boundaries of the city of Mount Juliet, so developers don't just head to the sprawl fields and try to avoid regulations. They want to urbanize and get high property values, yet they don't want to build brick standard, they don't want to build a curb and gutter standard, they don't want to build to this. In the case of this, and one of the awest things I think Mount Juliet could do in recommending this, or the county approving it, is the fact that sewer will never probably ever go up Bender's Ferry if this happens. Because what they'll do is they'll get one of those experimental sandbox systems, and if it fails, or if it rains before the topical part of the thing works, it's gonna run right off into the lake where you guys could be going skiing. Our sewer system, on the other hand, takes them all the way to Davidson County, 20 miles on the other side, processes it and puts it in the Cumberland River on the other side of town. So, I can't in good conscience see how this is gonna improve the outskirts of Mount Juliet by allowing the developers to avoid basically all of the things that we've all kind of worked for, just so they don't have to, to do as much and still achieve almost 400 home density out there on a two-lane road almost across from the lake. So I won't be voting for it.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Further questions or comments from the commission? Seeing no questions or comments for the commission, let's go ahead and call citizen comments. So, now's your, name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Lori Ramon. I live at 315 Gilly Road. And again, I agree with everything that he just said. I have a concern because there's a house that's also up for rezoning on Gilly, and we're not quite sure what the purpose of that is. Are they gonna, if they do build the subdivision there, are they, we, we, Gilly is a dead-end road. So are they gonna build another access on my dead-end road street? We've lived there for 14 years. We moved there because we have six acres. Our neighbors have lots of acreage out there and we don't want the traffic coming on our road. It's already hard enough to get out off of Gilly onto Bender's Ferry right now with the amount of traffic that's on Bender's Ferry. If this subdivision comes in at the highest density of the houses, it's gonna make it even worse. Bender's Ferry, Lebanon Road, just like you guys were talking about. So I'm, I'm just voicing my comments about the density. I know eventually houses may come in there, but you know, let's limit the, you know, let them be big lots. Don't, don't let them be little half-acre lots. And I'm sure, that's my husband and he's probably gonna say the same thing.
I will tell you that our subdivision regulations with this many houses require two access points.
So that's probably what they would do, is try to bump it up off Gilly.
Yeah, we're only looking at the rezone right now, so couldn't really tell you, but our regulations do require that with this many houses.
Well, we're, we're not happy if it comes on Gilly Road, so.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't really have nothing to say.
What she said. There you go. I got it. Yeah. What the important lady before you said. Yeah. I understand. Please, sir, name and address for the record. I agree with you.
Ray Aiken, 360, neighbors with property that's under issue here and like they said, I don't want traffic coming up and down our road. It's bad enough as it is.
And what was your address and name, please?
360 Gilly.
And your name?
Ray Aiken.
Thank you, Ray. So supporting what she said.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. Please, come on in.
All right.
Name, name and address for the record.
David Huggins, 2938 Bender's Ferry. I have property adjacent to this in between it and Gilly Road and, you know, it's zoned agriculture or whatever right now with the, just looking at the street, the Gilly Road, both accesses that are available to this property, 250 or whatever their lowest zoning is, is just, I mean, if y'all really look at it, that is already high density for the infrastructure, the roads and everything that's out there. And I would just hope that y'all would please really look at impact that it would have on the surroundings. And like I said, they will, Bender's Ferry is not made for that traffic. Gilly Road, poor people, it's not made for that. So I would just hope that y'all would please look into that. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have some? Okay. More comments on this item? Seeing none. Commissioner Giles, you had something you wanted to share, please?
Well, from the commission had, the Board of Commissioners had, had mentioned to me that, that the two accesses, this is still gonna be on Bender's Ferry Road. And the thing about it is if they're gonna get, and this is just me talking now, this, this access to Gilly, which obviously you know they are, and that's probably, I'm sure that house is probably coming down. You know, I would, I was strongly asked what recommend, what, what improvements are gonna be on Gilly Road? And if there's any, and that, and with this kind of traffic here, that would probably have to be widened, they don't have to give up their, their land. So in order for something like that to go through, I would have signed, I won't be here, but I would have signed agreements from all of these property owners up through Gilly, don't sound like they're gonna give it probably, for that road to be widened. And that, that improvement should go all the way to, to Bender's Ferry to facilitate that many houses in this top line where you're talking about. And of course, I'm in grants with, with Bobby as well. Of course, I'm not gonna be skiing and all that anyway, but, you know, so.
Yeah. You ski right there, you're gonna be skiing about two feet of water.
But, but seriously, with that, that type road, we better, if we can control it now, we better control it now than later if we can't.
What's that?
I'd like to say also.
Please.
I agree with Bobby Art. It's insane coming out on Gilly.
I almost bought a house there and, yeah, I mean, you know that road well, growing up around here. And the other access point on the Bender's Ferry, which Bender's Ferry, you're talking anywhere from 500 to 1,000 cars, you know, with four, 500 homes or however many they're gonna be, I guess 300 and whatever the number was, 391. So their other access point is right across from Sanford. So now you've got, I know there's not a huge number of homes coming, coming out on Sanford, but you've got all that traffic coming out there right across from what will be the main access point to this subdivision. And I, I agree with Art. I think, you know, I don't know what we can do, but, and I am all for this type of home in this community, because I think it does help the value, but you've got to have the infrastructure, like Bobby was saying. And I don't think Bender's Ferry supports that at all.
I see. Further questions or comments? All right. See no further citizen comments in regards to this item on our agenda. Should we ask for representation on this? Let's go ahead and ask for representation on this. Microphone, name and address for the record.
Mike Roy with Loews Design. I live at 1274 Poplar Hill Road. I'm representing Universal Builders and Dr. Wells. Really have nothing to add. I do have a question. I believe this is a recommendation, or used to be this way. It's a recommendation to the county commission, not the county planning commission.
County commission.
Right, okay. Just wanted to mention. So I think the staff laid it out well. It is in keeping with your future land use plan. This is a base zone. There's been no real design, so I'm really not prepared to discuss configuration, things of that nature, but I will attempt to answer any questions you have for me.
Questions or comments? Commissioner Turner?
Where would you make your second access?
Again, I, I think we probably have adequate room to have two on Bender's Ferry, adequate frontage, but we've not designed anything yet. We've not even sketched anything yet. If you're asking me, the cul-de-sac, and I'm, at, at this moment, I'm drawing a blank on the name of the cul-de-sac, Gilly. I can't say obviously that we, I would think your staff, county staff would most probably encourage a connection there. So I, I couldn't say that it wouldn't happen, if that's what you're asking.
How could you have two on Bender's without going down Gilly? Am I, am I looking at something wrong?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what the, there's no measurements on here, but this looks.
If I remember right, the frontage is considerably more than 200. I was thinking it was around 400. Am I dreaming that?
Yeah, we're talking about the property inside the red, right?
Is that Dr. Wells' house?
I'm not voting for this. Needs to be negative back to whoever.
Dr. Wells' house is on Gilly.
I apologize. In that case, I was, I was envisioning the northern parcel on Bender's Ferry was part of this application. That was obviously incorrect, so the second access would apparently have to be on Gilly.
Yeah. I think that's where you were talking about, would go into the lake, Bobby.
Yeah. Further questions or comments? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
See no additional questions or comments? I'd like to ask for a recommendation in regards to this item on our agenda.
Making a recommendation?
What if we don't? Does it just fail?
Mr. Marchetti?
Yes?
What if no recommendation is made in regards to an item on our agenda? It's an automatic approval, right?
Yes.
That's correct. Yeah. That would make, no action would send it forward as a positive recommendation. Correct.
So.
Please, Commissioner Franklin?
They have rights to build 244 single-family lots right now, if the county doesn't change anything. And figuring eight trips a day, you know, the difference between 391 and 244 is 1,176 car trips a day. So with respect to whether or not we recommend that that infrastructure out there for the county to go ahead and rezone this, to accept another 1,176, I think we do have a little skin in the game. We do have some residents down there that do share Bender's Ferry. And so if we do recommend this, just because it's consistent with our land use plan, it's our land use plan and our land use plan kind of is geared to what we would do, what we would require, what our infrastructure would, would, would have done. That's not what the county's gonna do. The county will not build this to our standards. And so, you know, they can build 244 and that would take 1,100 trips off of Bender's Ferry right there. And so, you know, I would, I would make a motion to just be a negative recommendation.
It's a motion and a second for a negative recommendation. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye against abstentions is a negative recommendation. Next item up on our agenda is item 6.1, is review the preliminary plat for cane break subdivision located on Devonshire Drive. Turn it over to you, Ms. Hamlin, please. Your floor.
Thank you. You have before you a preliminary plat for 276 single-family residential lots that will be located in Wilson County jurisdiction, located within our UGB. The reason that the applicant has not chosen to annex is because they will be connecting to Metro Sewer. Therefore, they don't need to be annexed for our services. The site is located at the southern end of Devonshire and has been zoned R1 and R2 in Wilson County since the 80s. They brought a sketch plat before the Wilson County Planning Commission, starting in January, and it was finally approved in July the 17th, 2020, to establish the number of lots to be submitted. At staff's recommendation, sidewalks are shown on both sides of the streets. And we have a letter from Metro Sewer, West Wilson Utility and the Road Commission stating that they approve the location of the sidewalks. The sidewalks will be located approximately 10 feet from each residential establishment within the development. Amenities are shown to include a pool, a playground, fire pit, and the plans indicate that an amenity center will be completed by the 150th CO. I cannot tell you how displeased I am with the elevations that you have submitted before you tonight. We have a beautiful development, Jackson Hills, that's primary material is hardy board, much like this development, and it's so much nicer than what we're seeing tonight. Staff has urged the applicant over and over to resubmit a nicer set of elevations to no avail. And although this development was started, the approval process in the county in December, we were not made aware of this project until August of 2020, when it was presented to us at a pre-application meeting. I also am so displeased in the process for this development and I feel like it was completely underhanded. I frankly don't appreciate it at all. This development, in my opinion, is lacking infrastructure connectivity with the railroad. I understand that we cannot force them to do that. And most disconcerting for me is they actually meet our subdivision regulations and we don't have the authority to deny this project, in my opinion. I will let Gino speak to that, but I wanted it to put on record my displeasure in this project. Thank you.
Please?
I am so old. I remember when Metro sued us for $20 million and part of the reason of that lawsuit was so we would pay to get them out of Wilson County. Where is it that they can come in and serve Wilson County subdivisions with their approval and not violate that contract?
Well, actually, Gino and I just had a conversation about that, so I was gonna let him speak to you as well.
It was $40 million. That they sued us and we reached an agreement back in 1999. And to be perfectly honest, I need to look at that. So if this does get approved tonight, I would leave open the issue of sewer service, whether it's Metro or Mount Juliet who is serving it. I was just speaking with Mr. Barlow to see how soon we could get sewer to them as opposed to Metro getting sewer to them. And I just need to look at that 1999 agreement, which is a 30-year agreement and was quite advantageous to the city of Mount Juliet. So if this is approved tonight, I would let that be an additional condition left open so we can decide who services it. They'll have sewer service either from us or from Metro, but it's just a question of who is the sewer provider. Does that make sense?
Maybe. I mean, is it in the best interest of the city of Mount Juliet to let other counties serve our growth area with infrastructure willy-nilly? I mean, the state authorized the regional planning commission of Mount Juliet to have the authority with, with Chapter 1101 to plan for infrastructure in our growth area. And here we have another county trying to decide one of the most important infrastructures required for a massive development. And, and I guess I'm unsatisfied with, with respect to whether or not we should allow that. This is going to detract from our ability to continue to provide sewer system in our city and in our growth area. We're supposed to plan to do that. And you know, it is a lot of money here. I mean, just from the financial aspect of how many permits, how many tap fees, how many, how much, how many millions of dollars in fees are gonna come into our sewer fund, that's gonna enhance that fund. And, and by us just saying, well, it doesn't make any difference to me, whoever wants to serve it first, whoever can get there with sewer line first is okay with me. Whoever wants to serve it first, whoever can get there with sewer line first is okay with me. Ain't okay with me. I think we gotta look out for our infrastructure and gotta look out for our jurisdiction. And, you know, that's a deal killer for me. I mean, I can't, I can't see why I have to approve this based on that out there hanging.
I mean, we're gonna, it's gonna be a city subdivision, correct?
No.
So you will stay in the county?
It will. We insist on it being our sewer.
Yeah, because as of right now, if they're not requesting annexation, then they're not city limits of Mount Juliet. So if you were speeding down Devonshire, you could speed until you got to this section, and then only Wilson County could speed you or get you for speeding because city of Mount Juliet would be out of jurisdiction. So likewise with Police Department, ambulatory services, fire services, all your boundaries are terminated at the beginning of this subdivision and the termination of Hickory Hills.
So all we have is what you said, then?
Well, I mean, I'm just one vote.
And chose.
I'm just one vote on Planning Commission, but I think it is in our authority to oversee infrastructure in our growth area. If the state didn't want us to do that, they wouldn't have made us a Regional Planning Commission. They wouldn't have passed 1101, 1998. And again, I don't know if it's legal that Metro can just say, we're gonna, we're gonna launch 300-house subdivision in your, in your growth area with or without, you know, your approval of us serving it. And so if, if that's the case, I, I, I think if we insisted upon serving in sewer, they would be more motivated to be annexed into the city, which would solve a lot of problems for me. The main problem is the fact that your jurisdictional conflicts between when a house was on fire and you have to call 911, you know, where does fire truck come from? I mean, who, who serves, you know, what? When we name all these streets off in here, every time that happens, it's surrounded by the city of Mount Juliet backed into Davidson County. You can't get to it from Wilson County. Wilson County Sheriff's Department, fire trucks, whatever, it's got to go through Mount Juliet to get to this, right? And so it would benefit this neighborhood to be served by our services as opposed to Metro's not gonna come out there and put out the fires unless we can't. So to me, if we insist on sewer, they would probably request annexation. That would solve a lot of problems. If we can do that.
Yeah, I recall a, not residential, but one that's right there on the property, and everybody said it is popular to get robbed for this very reason. But the, I guess it was First Bank and Trust, then Bank of the South, and then National Bank of Commerce, and then at one point it was Sun Trust, now it's closed and just an office building. But there at the, in the Shiloh, the, yeah, next to Sitco, what's the name of the street right there, Shiloh? Big Horn? Matterhorn? Is it Matterhorn that goes into Shiloh? Yeah, that, as a matter of fact, I was in banking at the time and got robbed, and nobody showed up because nobody knew who was supposed to serve it. That's literally, so Mount Juliet didn't, Wilson County didn't, Metro, they were all there. But nobody could do anything until a state trooper arrived, and ultimately, a state trooper had to decide who was gonna handle, the bank just got robbed. Meantime, nobody was chasing anybody for robbing a bank. That's kind of fascinating. But I mean, you run into things like that when you get into jurisdictional things. In this case, it's a life safety issue between the two of them. Um, I just wanna ask something back to staff. Let's just say that it goes, do we have any ability? This would be unique because they're coming across our city streets for a non-city project. Do we have an ability to, I know that we hold bonds and whatnot on them. And yeah, and this might be a Mr. Barlow's, probably right down Public Works Alley. But if you do this quantity of houses in this area, I mean, we, I know because consent agenda is filled with releases of letters of credit, but this thing's gonna massively, the concrete trucks, the dump trucks, the everything, and we're not gonna be able to have any say-so on that activity, the timelines, or anything that happens with that. And we have no ability to enforce a road impact fee. It's a non-revolt, it's not a letter of credit. It is basically, we're gonna hit you per house for what you're gonna do to our infrastructure. We don't have any ability to do that, do we? None? But on the city road, they get across the city road to get to this, because if they're not gonna open up... So, yeah, I mean, because they say they can't cross the rail, so the only way in is through our road. And so can we not say that you have to pay a $20,000 per lot impact fee for our roads? Because we believe, and there's probably evidence that would support something like that, to say that you're gonna mess it up? Outside of a letter of credit, I want a letter of credit, they're refundable. I want an impact fee for it.
Of that, the, we do have the hall surety, which they have to do during construction. And so that would be, based on the conditions that we have noted, that would be basically Devonshire Drive all the way to Lebanon Road. I believe the calculation is $35 per linear foot, and that's both ways. And that is for the entire time that they're in the construction. We've paved that, every stretch of that road within the last 17 years. I think it's been in two different, two different times paved it all. And so it's fairly, fairly fresh pavement out there. Alternately, if they did get a connection to Division Street, that is also a city street. They would have to additionally post a surety as well for construction access. It's a truck route, so it'd be handled a little differently, but we do have that. Now, to talk, what you're probably referring more to is a long-term impact of county homes on a city street, which is, is a point that I would say is not covered. What we did analyze, and it's pretty in-depth in our Public Works comments there, where we're talking about sort of the either-or. Our first preference, obviously, is an access to Division. To talk a little bit about that, city manager Kenny Martin, county mayor Randall Hutto are trying to facilitate some discussions with the Railroad Authority, which actually still owns the right-of-way, RJ Corman is the operator. And so trying to facilitate some discussions to see about, there's a crossing there. It's a crossing for a single home, though, and you're talking about a, a much larger access point. So it would be expanding the crossing. So there is a crossing today. They are objecting, they being the railroad, I guess the operator, RJ Corman, is objecting to expanding that crossing. I think it's looked bleak thus far, but that is our strong preference there, absolutely. The, but you see in, in lieu of that, we do have some off-site improvements that we see. So based on our requirements that we have, we do have a traffic study that's required for any development that comes in our urban growth boundary. And so, which we discussed on the prior project. This one, they did perform actually two different traffic studies, one with a connection to Division Street and one without. And so we're able to make those recommendations in an apples-to-apples situation. So we do have, if they're not able to get that, we did see enough degradation of the, I guess I would say, the delay at the two main access points to this area. We have two access points, is Devonshire at Lebanon Road and Willoughby Station Boulevard at South Green Hill. And we have a noted safety hazard, which is the reason why the city's invested well over $1 million to go towards a roundabout at that intersection. We had some very serious crashes, some injury crashes out there. And so based on that, we have been pursuing through that. We've obviously modified that some with some enhanced connectivity to our greenway. That's not really part of what we're looking at here. We're looking at the, the safety issues, and they actually, one of the left turn out, if you're at Willoughby Station, you wanna head north to go Lebanon Road, and you wanna take a left out of Willoughby Station. It's a blind hill, and there are speeding concerns. We have, we have documented speeding, and we have documented crash history, and that, and that particular movement is the one that we're most concerned with and why we're wanting to make the recommendations on this. And so that would be a backup to not getting the other access to Division. So, you know, having said all that, I think to your point is that we do see impacts, at least from a capacity standpoint, as well as a safety standpoint, on our city streets and city intersections, which we noted the speed humps, which I might make a condition as well, that we need to add up to four speed humps on Georgetown as well. From looking at the alignment there, that's gonna be a straight shot onto Georgetown coming straight down a hill. Actually have some additional concerns for speeding that will happen on that roadway. Those people will get affected. But as part of that, they are gonna be affecting that. We do have the speed humps in there regardless. I would, I would ask that you add that condition to Georgetown as well. But long-term, the traffic in and out of there, it will be county residents. It will be impacted city streets. It will degrade our roadways, you know, sooner than we would otherwise with the additional traffic on it. So I definitely hear your concerns on that. I think we've, where we're at with our limits are, is the hall surety and the, and the access and capacity and safety improvements that we've noted.
Got one other question. I think that we've done this on other subdivisions. Correct me if I'm wrong, can we not dictate construction entrances? We've done that on other projects before.
We did.
We can make it a condition of approval of this that the only construction traffic comes off of Division.
So based on...
Because they have access to Division, so therefore that's where their construction traffic needs to go.
We could. That would be, that would be at that existing crossing.
Fair enough.
I would note, we did have a comment in there. I'd have to look at the, where we did have. Basically, we did not want them driving all, all about Hickory Hills and Willoughby Station. So we did dictate that that goes straight up Devonshire to Lebanon Road. I'd have to find that. So feel free, we would, we, staff would definitely support making a revision of that condition that instead of using Devonshire to Lebanon Road, that it be changed to be to Division only.
Heading to my house, so I don't know if there's a way to add something that if they do cut through, that there's a large fine for everyone that's...
We did that on Jackson Hills coming through Arch's neighborhood, didn't we?
Did they?
Yep. Then we restricted construction traffic off of, what's your main thoroughfare? Woodridge.
Yeah, it still, it still happened daily, so there was just no, yeah, no consequence. So I think if there's a consequence, you know, maybe if it's not Division, then it's gotta be Devonshire. And, you know, if they're caught cutting the cross, then, you know...
See where Road F goes in, and that goes into, that's, that's undeveloped. But when you come up Georgetown to the end, where it says, there says like Lot 6 and 7, 8, all through that, where does that go to? It's all, you can't see. How far is that from Lebanon Road? Do they, they, do they have?
No.
They don't have access to Lebanon, do they? So it just stops right there. So that's just for future.
County line. Says here Metro zoning R10. So that apparently is your county line. So that's where Metro picks up, or appears. That be right?
That's correct.
Yeah, so it turned into Metro Davidson County at the termination point of Road F. So those neighbors would be Mount Juliet or Wilson County, and then Metro. She could have the potential at some point to have one neighborhood with three jurisdictional bodies within it.
Are you talking about where Georgetown ends or where Road F?
Well, Road F terminates into Metro Davidson County.
Right, and then what about Georgetown if you go north?
Uh, it turns around and eventually spills back out to Devonshire. Makes a reverse L.
This is Mount Juliet right there.
Yeah. Luke Shaw would want the traffic going through there, then?
He does, one of your biggest neighborhoods in Mount Juliet with three jurisdictional bodies in it at some point. Please?
Issues with this development. Used to live at the end of Devonshire on West Art Shop Court. And first of all, not to muddle things, Bobby, but Hickory Hills is serviced by Metro Sewer now, so...
We had a sewer system, though. They were serviced back when Mount Juliet wasn't even, I think, did it? Were we even incorporated? We certainly weren't annexed down there at all. I think they, they developed before.
Right.
Mount Juliet was even here.
Right, so I was just gonna clarify that, since we used to live there. Second of all, I have a real problem with the whole Devonshire being the construction entrance. The road has traffic calming features to it now that were added recently. And when you add all this construction traffic, I'm not sure, this would be a question for Andy, if the, the road, if Devonshire can even handle the structure of it, the construction traffic coming in and out. And Bobby, you might do some more calculations like you did with Bender's Ferry, about how many houses, how many cars, how many trips that's gonna be on Devonshire again. And there are no sidewalks, art, you know, on Devonshire. And that, when you, you take a roadway, when you've got people coming up and down Devonshire to the pool, the clubhouse, there's not a sidewalk to just walk on for just recreational purpose on Devonshire. And now you're gonna add traffic for how many hundred houses again, you know, to this?
That they had sidewalks in here, but it was on private. It was on theirs.
Not, not on Devonshire. There's some in front...
Not where you're talking about.
I'm talking about the existing Devonshire.
Oh, yeah, okay, okay.
That, it's not, and if I understand right, because of the easements and the mailboxes and all of that right-of-way, that those can't be put there.
Well, I don't know if it can be, but it wasn't required when that was built.
Right.
And we've since taken care of that, yeah. But I don't know that's true, then.
But like Luke said, you're taking a very large subdivision in Mount Juliet, making it even bigger, and all that traffic's going down a two-lane road and ending on Lebanon Road. I know that there were some improvements to happen at Lebanon Road as far as the signal goes, but I, I'm against this being, especially the construction entrance. I don't know, like Luke said, what we can do if we can make that a condition, but I don't think that Devonshire can handle it.
Other questions or comments?
I'll make another comment.
Please.
Talked, the more angry I got, I guess. I live in Willoughby Station, and I, I see nothing or hear nothing good about this subdivision. The traffic, the, the consequences of, you know, we don't have a roundabout yet at South Green Hill, but, you know, you turn left, you take your life in your hands every time you turn left out of there. It's already backed up 15 cars deep currently. Devonshire's the same way in the morning. Now, you know, the two left turn lanes would take care of some of that. And I have to agree with Jennifer, the houses in here, just disappointing. I mean, that's probably the best thing I could say about these designs. Jackson Hills is beautiful. We got Tuscan Gardens, you've got Nichols Vale. All of those represent what Mount Juliet is going to, and this does not. So I guess, just, I know, that's just all my comments. I'll leave it at that.
For the questions, comments, let's go ahead and ask for representation of this project then. Oh, please, Andy.
I did, you brought up a good point on Road F, I believe, Art, you brought that up. We're talking about putting a road stub. We don't know what would happen to the west. It could be apartments. Is the only access going to be city Mount Juliet roadways eventually? Would it be Georgetown? We don't know. There's a big unknown there. We would have a certainty if the right of way was not extended to the county line. So, I mean, as far as given the uncertainty there, if there was other access points out of that property that they could obtain the railroad crossings, I'd probably feel different about it. If it could be extended to Tulip Grove Road to the west, I'd feel better about it. But I don't know from looking at parcel maps, if there's a opportunity there even. Given that uncertainty, I don't, I don't know that that's a, I don't know that's a plus for us. I don't know that we, if we have the authority to recommend that connection not be extended. But it's worth consideration by this body.
Been through four revisions of our transportation and land use plan since I've been here 15 years, and one consistent, very consistent topic, even during the early days to where we are right now, is another north to south corridor between Division and Lebanon Road. Been a topic of conversation, how could we make it happen on tape? How could we make it happen with the subdivision designs that we've seen? And I will say that this has consistently been a logical north to south, which would help some of that Willoughby Station right there. But you got to have that rail and, and everything. And, and I think that there was a vision, not necessarily this vision, but for that to be another opportunity to get north to south between Lebanon Road and Division, done the right way.
To that point, Chairman, our transportation plan that we passed just earlier this year does show Devonshire connecting through this property to Division Street.
Correct. Thank you. Let's go ahead and call for representation of this item on the agenda. Please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Mr. Chairman, Tom White, 315 Dedrick Street. I represent the applicant as legal counsel. Ryan Lovis is here from Civil, which will also address this matter. The principal thing I want to address at the front end of the discussion is that this is a preliminary plat. And I have understood, and I've got a great deal of respect for Jennifer Hamlin, I understand that some things may not have taken place exactly the way she would have liked them to be. But at the end of the day, what we all have to admit is that we meet the subdivision requirements, period. And that was her comment, that's a correct comment. The law in Tennessee is very clear. If you meet the subdivision regulations, this is a preliminary plat, it has to be approved. And your legal counsel is here, I've addressed that issue with him earlier. And at this moment, I'd just like to ask with permission of the Chair, that Mr. Marcati be asked whether or not that's a correct statement of the law, because it's a critical issue here.
That is a correct statement. And so it's up this body to understand whether or not they meet our subdivision regulations, including the roads, et cetera, and so forth. But if we're talking about the structures themselves and elevations, they meet those. That make sense?
Let me, let me ask you, you said the structures meet it, but you didn't say that the road construction met it, correct?
That I would depend upon Mr. Barlow, et cetera.
So that's where that we could, that's where that we, we, that, that we have some influence on this. Correct?
I'd have to ask Mr. Frank.
So.
Commissioner Franken, you wish to?
Yeah.
Check, check, one, two. Check, one, two. Audio, one, two.
All right. The attorney, city attorney has properly told me we're ready to go. So reconvene. I had to say it twice. So we are reconvened and started back up. At which time, if he can regain his train of thought, Ryan Lovelace, representation for the Kane Breaks subdivision from Civil Site Design is going to pick back up where he left off. So Ryan, you have the floor.
So on Devonshire Drive, like Andy had said, we had, you know, as part of y'all's major thoroughfare plan, we're building a three-lane section from the north to the south, just like Devonshire is today, a three-lane section. So we've agreed to that. So it's a three-lane section all the way to the railroad right-of-way, where our property line ends. We, as you can see on the bottom of the plan, we fully intend and strongly, strongly would love to have that railroad crossing, just like you guys would, just like the county would. We intend to fully build it. I mean, the lights, the arms, the signals, the turn lanes on Division, every aspect of it, we're fully intending to build that. We want it, again. That's something that we, we want, just like you guys do. So it's important to us, and we've deferred this for, I mean, three months, four months, something like that, working with the railroad, just working with them. And here recently, we've got some good momentum now. Like Tom said, Mayor Hutto is helping us, and Kenny Martin is helping us now, and we're getting a little stronger of a voice, which is necessary to get this railroad crossing. So we're getting the momentum. We're hopeful for it. But at the same token, like, like Andy said, it's a, it's a slim chance also. So we, just because the railroad controls them, they don't like these at-grade crossings. That, that is what it is. So we have other provisions to have other traffic improvements to the north. Like Andy said, we provided a traffic study. Our traffic study from our traffic engineers stated that we did not have to have any road improvements. Now, we want to work with you guys and staff in the county, and definitely want to do the northbound turn lane on Devonshire Lebanon Road, put an extra turn light, or light up there on Lebanon Road. So now you'll have two left turn lanes on Devonshire when you're up on Lebanon Road, instead of the single one. Also, there's been some conversations about the roundabout, and we can talk about that in a second. I know the city is, is in the process of, of working on that design, working on the easements, working on the construction. And, you know, we're, again, we're hopeful we get this connection to the south, just like you guys want. We're also in agreement to, to have the, the speed humps that Andy has spoken about on Devonshire. I think he mentioned a couple on Georgetown. That is okay. Sidewalks, we are putting a six-foot sidewalk on both sides of Devonshire Road. We're building a five-foot sidewalk on all our roads internally and outside of Devonshire. So we're meeting your regulations. And I know that's what, something you guys desire now, and we're willing to do that. Of course, it has to be outside the road right-of-way, because these are county roads. The, I heard some discussions about construction exit, and we have a note on our plan, and we also agreed to it, that our construction route has to go straight north, has to go up to Lebanon Road. Y'all's standard is we have to post a letter credit. It's a steep letter credit to protect that Devonshire Road. And we have an agreement that we will only go towards the north. We can't go anywhere else. The, there was discussions about construction road going to the south. That existing at-grade crossing is for the driveway to the house. That's not our at-grade crossing. We don't have any connection to Division down there. That's not ours. So again, our construction, our only entrance is to the north, if we don't have that connection to the south given to us by that, the railroad company. I would, Jennifer, I know you had some heartburn about the timing of things. I haven't had a chance to tell you, January, what happened and all that. We, we submitted in January for all townhomes. This is R2 zoning. You can do townhomes, multifamily, and single-family by right. So we submitted a townhome development project to the county, and we deferred once, I believe, and then COVID happened. And we just, like everything, everything just shut down for three or four months. So after the process of COVID being complete in April, May, like Trump said, we resubmitted with single-family. And single-family went straight to the county, got approved, the sketch plan, and then we came right to you guys and calling them up. Now, we've deferred quite a few times with the railroad. So there was a big delay in there, and I'm glad we're not here tonight for townhomes, but that's why. So it was not just a six-month process here. It was just a long gap there. So I apologize. But I am glad bringing you guys, single-family, tonight. We are doing side entry garages in the lots that are yellow, which are all the lots that are facing Devonshire. That was a request by staff, and I think it's a good request. And if I could, you know, also one thing too, we're doing a pool, a poolhouse, male kiosk. I know Jennifer's asked us to be, to be lighted. We're okay with that, male kiosk. But as far as the road improvements go, I would like to read and then also give this to you guys, read this into the record of pretty much what I just told you for our road improvements. "The at-grade railroad crossing to West Division is desired the city and county, and we agree that this is good planning. Therefore, we are willing to fund this crossing and associated improvements to its entirety. This will include the at-grade crossing, the flashing signals above the tracks, safety arms gates, and the turn lanes on West Division with 100 feet of storage in both directions. This is budgeted to be $400,000. This connection will require all approvals and permitting to be issued no later than August 15, 2021. Should these approvals and permits be issued, then construction on the improvements will commence by July 2022. Should the approvals and permits for the West Division Street Connection not be issued by that date, the pursuit of this access will be terminated in order to commence the design on the next road improvements mentioned below. Number two, if the above-mentioned at-grade crossing is terminated, then we agree to install a northbound second-left turn lane on Devonshire with an additional signal head. And that's what I just mentioned before. The signal head will be installed on and within the existing infrastructure, and this will be completed prior to the platting of the 155th lot. Secondly, we agree to provide a financial contribution to the city-funded roundabout construction at Willoughby Station and South Green Hill Road. This payment will be equal to the difference between the $400,000 mentioned above and the total cost associated with the Devonshire Lebanon Road improvements. This financial contribution will be provided at the conclusion of the above-mentioned Devonshire Road project. If the at-grade crossing is constructed, then the two, the roundabout and the Devonshire turn lane are not necessary, and therefore, they won't be constructed or funded, obviously. And I think, Andy, we've talked about that before. If we connect to Division, the other two improvements aren't necessary anymore." Correct. So now I'll give that, Jennifer, to you. There was also some discussion about the Metro project to the left, or Metro property to the left. That's zone R10, I think it is, which is single-family. There were some discussions about being apartments and townhomes and everything. It's a single-family development over there. If you look at that parcel, whenever that's developed, there will be four or five different connections. And this property, as well as that property, and Hickory Hills can all go straight over to Grove Road to the traffic light over there. So you guys have talked about what happens over there. It'll be a single-family development, and it really opens up all the connections of the roadway system for this, Hickory Hills, all the way to Grove Road, all the way back to Lebanon Road to Lady Nashville Road, I think is what it's called. There's a missing piece whenever that happens over there. With that, I'm here to answer any questions. Again, like Tom has said, we meet all the subdivision regs of the city. We meet all the zoning regs of the county, and we've worked real hard to get to this point, and ask for your approval tonight, and I'm here to answer your questions. Thank you.
I've got one real quick. You mentioned that you can't go to, can't or won't, don't want to, go to Division and that be your access point. So you said it's servicing the house, but the house is currently part of the property, right?
The house is on the bottom right, outside of our boundary. You can see it, well, the bottom of Detention Pond is, to the right of our entrance down there. There's a house just off the boundary line. It's that house. It's not our property, no. That's their access.
This property currently has zero access all the way to Division.
West Wilson has a water line in there, so I know they're using it. I'm assuming people use it, probably not illegally, but it's for the house. Again, we want to develop that connection, guys. I mean, we want to build it. We want to fund it, and hopefully we can get there.
Just wish you'd change your houses.
Art, place three. Now, Ryan, even though that's residential where Road Elf goes out, it's zone residential. Could they not rezone that? Of course they could. So there could be 1,000 apartments or 2,000 in there.
Their land use policy is T3NE or something like that. So just like y'all's, that land use policy doesn't allow that. But yes, it could.
Okay. And then you said that you would put 400,000 up to try to, and I think that, to get access to Devonshire, to get an exit there. Right. I mean, Division, I'm sorry.
We would fund completely the connection to, for the at-grade crossing, the lights, the arms, the turn lanes. We'd fund it all. We're assuming it's $400,000 if we have to do the other improvements.
Okay. So even if it was 600, you would pay it, or 800, or whatever.
That's ours.
Okay. And then also, the sidewalks, which would be obviously on county, because it's not city you're talking about on Devonshire. Who's, who's going to be responsible for the maintenance of those?
Of the sidewalk? HOA.
Okay. And how do we, Andy, how do we ensure this for the maintenance of that?
And I will say too, the final plat does come back to you guys eventually, so it can be assured that the covenants and restrictions are part of the final plat whenever it comes back to you guys. That's a good way to make sure it's in there.
When was the date that you requested sewer access to Mount Juliet Sewer System on?
To Mount Juliet?
Yeah.
We submitted to Metro in probably January.
You didn't submit a written request to Mount Juliet?
Nope. Again, all of Hickory Hills is Metro Sewer. That's where this is due.
Hickory Hills was built before Mount Juliet had sewer system, or before it had a contract with Metro.
I guess trying to do what you can to clean it up. 200, how many houses? 276 houses with 20 parking places on amenity center that's also servicing your mailbox kiosks for 276 houses. Trying to treat me like a kindergartner. Explain to me how that works.
Historically, our amenity centers in Mount Juliet has been the 10% rule. 10% of your lots is the parking area.
And what it's going to, what it's going to do is we're going to adjust the ordinance. We're going to get those kiosks out of the amenity centers, because it's inadequate parking for 276 houses. It's inadequate to service 276 mailboxes at the same location that you're going to put all the children around. It's a poor design. It's a poor layout, and it's not well thought through. It's the cheapest thing that you can get away with. Absolutely. Without, everything about it right now is the cheapest thing that they can get away with.
That was, I'll, I'll say, the parking lot was graphic. I mean, if we need to more, add more spaces, we're more than willing to add more spaces. It was a graphic representation to show the pool and amenity center.
I, I would love to see the, see it moved out of the, I mean, the mailbox kiosk. I mean, it's not a small neighborhood. I mean, you're talking 276 mailboxes is probably going to go wall-to-wall in this room alone to get 276 of those mailboxes that I've seen them set up out there. I mean, I've seen one that's servicing 40, and it's 15 feet long in itself. And so 276 of 276-unit mailbox kiosk sitting in there is, along with only 20 parking places, and, and you're gonna, you're gonna drive to this one. I mean, you can look at the topo issues that they're going to be dealt with to develop this site. And, I mean, I know art on the sidewalks, we had that in our welcoming this morning, and my thought on those is, as well, and I like them, but, and walkability is a big thing, but, I mean, the topo is going to be such within this neighborhood, as much of Hickory Hills is. I lived over there for nine years myself. I mean, you're, you're going to drive, and you're going to throw in 20 parking places. So we're going to put traffic on Road B. We're going to put traffic on Devonshire. And one of the things that, that we got to do is we just, we need to amend our subdivision regulations. I'll see if I can write something up and get these mailbox kiosks out of amenity centers. They just got to get away. But just too many of them are getting crammed in there. It's repetitive conversation that we're having, and I hate that the United States Postal Service is making them stew these, and it's no fault of you guys or anybody else. But, I mean, I just, that's malfunction junction from the beginning just to go and see if I won Publisher's Clearinghouse, you know?
I agree with that.
So we'll, we need to find a common ground and charge staff with getting us something on that. We got to get them out of these amenity centers. Further questions, comments? Please.
We also, what I discussed earlier with the, the traffic through Willoughby. I know you say that, you know, you keep the, the traffic going north and south. But we've been through this before, and they were supposed to go north and south, and they don't. So I don't know if there's anything we can add in to say, you know, there's some kind of fine if they traverse Willoughby Station Boulevard.
We, we talked about this. Gino, we, correct me if I'm wrong, because we did talk about this on Jackson Hills because of the impact over there. We don't have any ability to levy anything. If a dump truck servicing this is coming down Willoughby Station Boulevard instead of Devonshire, we have police department would have no ability to say, oh, you're going there and do something about it.
Correct.
Yeah. We don't have any, we'd have to rewrite the codification of law probably to allow them to do that. And that would be extension beyond our subdivision regulations. And that'd be something enforceable by Mount Juliet Police Department within the codification of law. So, yeah. Yeah. If I was that truck driver, I'd say I'm going to deliver it XYZ address. We talked a bunch about it on that Jackson Hills. Sure do. I, I agree. Wish we could. Further questions, comments?
I do like what you're talking about, the, the kiosks, the However, I also want to fill this in too. There may be another alternative too for these centers to be built a lot larger for the recreation, because you've got some people that will go to say they have like a workout room or something, and they want to get the mail at the same time. That also cuts down transportation for a vehicle to go somewhere else in that subdivision. So if that was a larger area, like he's talking about increasing the parking, there may be some kind of concession we could do with that too. If it's so large, you know, there's, instead of having 20, have another 20. You know, 20 for the mail, because it would be the same thing if you had two somewhere else. Maybe have 40 in one location instead of 20. I'm just hypothetically saying this, Ryan, just whatever. And that way, somebody could do two or three things at one time in that area. So I think you might could look at that too. But the safety is first and foremost, and I think that's what we need to do. And I know that's what you're talking about, Luke. But there might be a way to do it in one location that would secure the safety of the kids plus allow people to, to go to their mailbox.
Yeah. Please.
I want to follow up on a couple of citizen comments, Ryan. One from Reverend Fred. He was asking, you know, on Devonshire, he was talking about four lanes all the way up to Lebanon. He's also talking about dual sidewalks on Devonshire from the development all the way to Lebanon. Do you have comments on that?
We actually talked about the sidewalk before the meeting and actually looked at that. Unfortunately, there are power poles running down Devonshire, mailboxes. There's a lot of things in the way that doesn't allow us to even think about putting the sidewalks to the north. And then also another person had mentioned about the springs at Georgetown. I love that information. That makes my life easier from an engineering drainage standpoint later on. I'm not sure exactly where that is, so I'll have to discuss that with them. Our entire property, 99% of it drains away from Mount Juliet. It all heads down toward the railroad tracks toward Metro. So there must be some pocket in there that I'll find out where that is. And I'm so happy to get that information now. Makes my life easier from a design standpoint. Because we have to pick it up. If there's water, a spring or something, we have to pick it up.
Please.
Well, I agree, and I want to comment on that. The impact from developments like this affect the other developments like going up Devonshire. And even though they may not be able to put a sidewalk on both sides, you, you should be able to on that south side because of the way that is. And it's, this subdivision will impact all of that other for, for, for walkers and runners. And it's just not, it's just like you've referred to several times up here, Luke, which I've probably lost my election over it. But we also save lives. So I'd rather know that we were going to save lives going up Woodridge. And because there is an impact from all of Jackson Hills and all of, of the Bradshaw Farms company. There is an impact to ours. There is an impact here to Devonshire and, and all of that area going through there. So I think it's real important to try to get a sidewalk anywhere you can.
I agree.
Further questions, comments? Let's go ahead and start up some citizen comments here. Y'all ready? All right. Do we have anybody here that wants to speak on this item? If you do, name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Doug Brown. I live at 1943 Dunedin Drive. I live on probably the next best thing to a cul-de-sac, which is a U-shaped closed loop with virtually no-through traffic. Knock on wood. If you go a couple hundred feet south of us, you'd be on the railroad tracks. My wife and I moved to Mount Juliet and Hickory Hills eight and a half years ago from a central Ohio subdivision. Strangely, very similar to Mount Juliet. Exploding growth, exploding school population. And I watched a lot of the same challenges facing Mount Juliet faced that suburb. I don't envy this body in trying to deal with the exploding growth in Mount Juliet and all of the conflicting issues. There's probably no winner, no matter what. But even though I didn't have much involvement with land use at my former residence, I did come to know a number of city officials toward the end of our time there. And one serious problem that came out of that period was unrestricted development. And I wish I had a nickel for every time I heard a city official say, doggone it, I wish we got it right the first time. There was too much politics going on, too many backroom deals. Couple of people actually spent some time at the Gray Bar Hotel because of it. But the, the prospect that I'm hearing from council for the developer is, is basically that you all are a rubber stamp. You can sit and listen politely to their propositions, but by golly, you need to approve what we're bringing you tonight. If that is the case under Tennessee law, frankly, I'm terrified. And it also makes me ask, what is the position or what is the, the reason for an urban growth boundary if that's the case? We don't need the commission here. We need one person with a stamp that can stamp approved. And anybody in the growth boundary can go on and willy-nilly and do whatever they want. I didn't know anything about cane break until the news broke in our subdivision in July. People were understandably miffed that the county had approved it, and nobody knew anything about it. I knew somewhat about the previous attempts to develop this area. I knew about the suggestion of this parcel for the new high school. Many of the same reasons that it was opposed when the high school was proposed still apply. The primary one is traffic. With or without a division road outlet, the impact on Hickory Hills is going to be monumental. With 276 homes and a national average of 1.88 vehicles per house, you're looking at almost 520 vehicles. Which if the grade crossing is not approved, and the developer goes ahead anyway and sends everybody up Devonshire.
One minute.
It sends everybody up Devonshire, you're going to be putting 520 vehicles on Devonshire at least between Georgetown and Maricord. Not counting the vehicles that take the side roads once they find out where they are. This, this is this is an awful proposal. I would like to hear from the city at some time about whether they in fact do have the right to place conditions on this subdivision or are simply, as council would have you believe, a rubber stamp for their application. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional citizens here for this? All right. See no further citizen comments? I'd like to ask for a motion in regards to this item on the agenda. Commissioner Franklin?
I would like to make a motion to disapprove this plat, and I'd also like to put in the record as to why. This may or may not be consistent with the Mount Juliet Regional Thoroughfare Plan. It may be consistent if they get a grade crossing to connect to West Division, but we don't know that. We can't know that at this date. I haven't heard anything about a great separated crossing being missioned. I don't know that the, the rail authority would not approve something like that, but certainly would be an option for them, but I hadn't heard anything about that. That gives me pause. I also can't vote for this because it's in violation of an existing contractual agreement that we had with Metro that goes back to 1999. And I don't have that great a memory. The reason that this even occurred to me is because I worked for the city when we had to go out and try to make good on this contract. This contract was dated June 22nd, 1999. And, and Metro was trying to get out of Wilson County. They didn't want to provide sewer out here anymore. In fact, they, as a part of the contract, made us take over some of their failing systems out here at our expense. But in paragraph 14, "In areas of Wilson County not currently served by sewers, Mount Juliet shall have 90 days upon the receipt of a written request for sewer service in which to decide whether to provide said service. If Mount Juliet declines to serve the area or fails to agree to provide service to the area within 90 days, Metro shall have the right, but not the responsibility, to furnish sewer service to the area." The developers had every opportunity to ask the city of Mount Juliet to provide sewer service. And, and trust me, this does hurt a very large, I guess, our second-largest enterprise fund in the city of Mount Juliet not to provide this service to 300 homes or almost 300 homes. We weren't even asked. And so it's in violation of this contract. So that's another reason. So that's my motion. Motion is to
Got a motion? It's a motion and a second? Do you have something you wish to add, Mr. Barlow? Please.
I did want to speak to the sewer. Basically, according to what Commissioner Franklin just read, this area is to be served by the City of Mount Juliet Sewer System unless we deny it. To date, we have not received, I went and checked, we've not received any requests for availability there. And so therefore, this is still City of Mount Juliet sewer area to be served. I would defer to Gino on the recommendation. If this has to be approved or denied, or approved with a condition, then it has to go back to the, through the process of sewer availability through the city, of which I would want to take that by resolution to the Board of Commissioners of, of their choice to serve or not to serve, since they are the governing body over our sewer system. But I would, I would leave that to Gino on his recommendation for a approval with that or disapproval based on that.
Thank you. Standing motion and standing second. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye. Against, abstentions is disapproved. Next item on our agenda is a, falls underneath parkland purchase request. It is a recommendation item back to the Board of Commissioners. The first one is item 7.1, review the parks. Go ahead. No, 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 no.
And I talked out. Would it be totally unwise for us to defer these to one month? And if somebody would second, just to hear my reasoning for deferral. And if you don't like it, vote to move on. But I would like to defer this for one month. If I could get a second on that, I will tell you why. Okay. Mount Juliet, since I've lived here for 30-something years, has had all kinds of park policies. And they have changed between administrations, rather abruptly, back and forth, back and forth. The main difference between the policies to buy parkland in Mount Juliet has been whether to continue with neighborhood convenient, kind of itty-bitty parks that are kind of specialized, just bought a couple or bought one. Or a regional central park facility that's kind of common to everybody. And I don't know that there's a wrong way or a right way, but I do know that the City of Mount Juliet just had an historic election where four members went before the public and got reelected, talked to people. And I don't know that the park policy is the same as it was prior to the election. It may be. It may have changed, it may not have changed. The other thing is, this body might be different next month. Mayor may not send all of us back. I mean, we may have a body recommending purchasing property for a policy that's non-existent. I think in 48 years of not buying any property in Mount Juliet for the parks, waiting one month to let the city commission seat, maybe say, do we want to keep on expanding our parks, little bitty parks like we got? Or do we want to have a regional park before we recommend something that would be one of those or the two? I do know for a fact that a regional parkland of 112 acres that I negotiated in 2007 on the western end of the Bals Farm was reluctant to talk to the city based on the election. They knew that a lot of people were going to change or could change. And they didn't see any reason to negotiate a regional park deal ahead of everybody maybe changing the park policy or, or not being interested in it after the election. So if the city commission really wants to buy a bunch of little parks, that's fine. Be happy to review them. But I'm not so sure it's, it's set yet because they're not been seated yet. So I just would like to defer it one month.
I was going to say, you're, yeah, we got a motion and a second, so let's discuss this real quick. So you're our sitting current
Okay.
Commissioner?
Bobby, I agree with you. You and I have talked before, and I, and I wish we had a regional park, a larger park, and I still think that we can. I unfortunately won't be there for at least four years probably, so I won't be able to, to, to say anything on that. But these two, these two pieces of parkland are these, these two parcels. I've gone to both of these. And one of them, although I wish we were buying all 30 acres, apparently we're probably not, it's just going to be apparently we're probably not, it's just going to be 20 acres and that's okay. I think where the one is, which is Hayes' property, is very needed on the southwest side. Commissioner Malley is here and she is welcome to come up and I'll draw, bring her up to speak if you want to about this. This is in her district, but it's not just because it's her district. If you think about where our parks are, we have one at Charlie Daniels Services. I mean, we've got a center there and everything, record. And we have Monday, which is on the southeast side. We do not, we will not have, and all of this development is coming that was approved for the southwest side. And then we're going to have the new interchange there. And then, so I looked at that property and liked that property. There was a survey taken on the south side. Correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Malley, that people wanted trails and they wanted like greenways or paths to be able to go to. We really have nothing. We have those that are here, but for someone to go and maybe have picnics and stuff like that, we don't really have that type of facility here. We have a little bit at Monday, but you still got the ball fields. I didn't know a whole lot about Thomason property and I was a little reluctant for, for some reason. I thought for some reason that it could just be too rocky to build. I went over there, absolutely loved it. I love both of these pieces of property. And the thing about Thomason, it's not as, is, is, I don't want to say manicured, it's just mostly grown, but it's still wonderful. It'd be a wonderful place for paths that you could have a trailhead and walk, you know, and make it miles or whatever. And I, I think that people are wanting this. I know that, that you've got more. We just voted for more personnel for the, the parks to have. That was on our last meeting. Correct me if I'm wrong. We've, and it's going to take a little bit more staff for this, but I think that this affords what the people are wanting in addition to a larger track. So there was, there was a workshop other night dealing with, with these two, these two properties. And I, I hope we buy these. I hope that, I hope that we, we put this in our parkland. We need this for people to be able to go and enjoy nature. I've heard one person say, well, I wouldn't let my wife go to Thomason, I guess by herself, but they would to Hayes' property just because of the way it's, it's cut up and et cetera. So, you know, I'm, I'm looking forward to walking on both of these. But anyway, I still understand, but, but you're, but they've already met. The workshop that was, I chose not to go, okay? Because I'm not in that, that I'm not going to be after Monday. But I chose not to go, but, but to my understanding, if I'm wrong, but to my understanding, there was four votes to purchase both of these at that, that meeting that they, they, I mean, for that they all like this. So I, I don't know. So I want to, I want to recommend that this go through approved to buy both of these. So.
Chairman, I'm not debating whether it's a good or bad idea, really. I just thought that it might be better to wait until the commission was seated and we were intact or whoever we were going to be after the mayor decides who he wants on the planning commission. And, and just do that. But if it's a time rush on it, again, there, there's no wrong answer here. I mean, everybody likes parks. I mean, you know, the only thing I like to do if I go to a park is be able to park. But I mean, we're going to be 75,000 one day and we keep on building these little 20 acre parks everywhere. That's kind of downside to it. The upside to it is they're more convenient, you know? I mean, but anyway, my motion was just to defer a month. It really wasn't debated.
It's good staff input.
Sure. Before you do defer it, if you do, I'd like for Gino to educate you guys a little bit as to why you are seeing this on the agenda tonight where we've not seen that previously at a planning commission meeting. And also I would love for Ms. Malley to give us an update about the work session that they had on Monday night. And I believe Mr. Hefner was in attendance to that. So I think the new commission was in attendance for that meeting.
Gino?
Gino?
Would you like to lead?
Sure. Just very quickly, anytime a city purchases property for a park or otherwise, it's supposed to be reviewed by the planning commission, not unlike zoning. It still goes to the BLC for approval. Now as to the Hayes' property, I can't recommend this contract. And I'm not disputing whether it's a good park, bad park or anything else for a variety of reasons. It's tied up for 30 years as a park. So if for whatever reason something changes and you want to sell it, you can't sell it. It's a park for 30 years. There's no due diligence provision in this. I don't know if engineering's been done, et cetera, and so forth to make it usable as a park. I understand there's a one lane bridge is the only access to it currently. Understand Mr. Hayes was going to grant us a temporary easement just for our, to bush hog it, et cetera, and so forth, but not a public easement, which means that's more expensive unless that bridge is the way to get in. There's an indemnification clause. There's no due diligence provision. Couple of other things as well. He wants binding arbitration, which I always object to. So again, I'm not debating whether or not this is a good park or bad park, but the contract that's submitted here, which you're reviewing, is not one that I would recommend the city or any client sign for that matter. The Thomason, they agreed to everything that we wanted on it, the other contract. So as far as the contract, that one's, that one's fine.
Other question. So if we approve that, do we also approve the contract or?
Yes. That's, that's what's up tonight. It's to approve the contract.
We don't. We're just giving them a recommendation.
Right. But you're approving the contract as part of the deal. So the BLC can amend it, but you're, you're not just saying buy 20 acres for a million dollars. You're saying buy 20 acres pursuant to this contract. And they do not have to accept the contract, but they, and I'm sure they'll change it based on the comments I had last time it was up and was deferred, if I'm not mistaken.
Mr. Turner, I believe what Gino's trying to say is you're making a positive or negative recommendation for the contract.
Right.
Thank you. Five acres, you said it's 20 now?
Yeah. I think that Commissioner Malley will be able to explain this a little bit further on that. And, and I think that, that it was, it was gone from, from that meeting, from 15 a proposal to 30. So I don't, and I, so I'm going to let her, because I wasn't there. So everything's hearsay, but she was there.
Hi, Jennifer Malley, 217 Sunny Acre. I'm just going to update you Monday night with the work session. And prior to the work session, the idea of these two properties was a package deal. Thomason on the north end and Hayes on the south end. Get one on each end of town. At the last BLC meeting, these were split. It was not my understanding these were supposed to be split, but they were. So at the BLC meeting, we deferred on Hayes to a work session. The Thomason property failed to get a second. So both properties were discussed Monday night at the work session. So after some negotiations with the property owner and his lawyer were here, it was general consensus, this is what we came up with. And I haven't read the BLC agenda for Monday night to make sure the contract's revised because it just came out today. I haven't read it. But initially it was 30 acres with for 1.4 million. It included the power lines and the gas line going through it. About a total of 10 acres included the gas lines and the electrical lines. And 20 acres were actually buildable. The, you can't, there's nothing you can do with the gas line except you get one place to cross it and that's it. But under the power lines, you can build parking lots, trails, you know, things like that. So Monday night, it was discussed and negotiated. So what we basically decided on, and it seemed to general consensus, of course, we didn't take a vote, but a general consensus that it was good with everyone. No, no one objected to, to it. So here's what we came up with. Instead of the 30 acres for 1.4, narrow it down to 20 acres, which would be the, the back portion of the property on the, I guess that would be the west side of the gas lines and the easement. So the 20 acres would not include the gas lines or the easements. It would be the back portion, completely buildable. Okay? And so for $925,000, this was agreed. This does not include any gas lines. It's a 30-year deed restricted, which means the property owner gets naming rights and it would be a guaranteed park for 30 years. This is what his whole thing was because it's his family's property and he wanted to name it after his grandfather. So this meant more to him than anything, any amount of money. This is what was important. So he agreed to the 30 years. Initially at the BLC meeting, it was discussed because the contract wasn't finalized. So in the meeting, contract negotiations were going back and forth. So of course we deferred to the work session. So this was ironed out in the work session and it was agreed upon on all sides, 30 years. This included a permanent access. We would, with a buffer on the property owner's side, a tree buffer. The, we decided that we didn't have to do anything with the park property right away, but the property owner agreed to a permanent access when the city got ready to do something with it. It was only, the intention is to preserve it for the future. Because this connects, if you picture Providence Central, you're familiar with that, the southwest end of it. This property connects to that where the single family homes are going, which, you know, it'd be several, several years away. But you remember that development where the single family homes, this connects to that. This is where the backside of that property is, this 20 acres. So the idea is later on, when the city gets ready to do something with it, at this single family section of Providence Central, the, there's going to be a park there with, you know, some things, walking trails or whatever. There's a place where we could get access to this 20 acres. So the agreement with the property owner on Hayes is since the city won't be ready to do anything with it, even though they've granted us, will grant us a permanent access at some point. But to allow Rocky access to his driveway with the current bridge and in order to get back there and maintenance, cut it, trim it, whatever. So, you know, and which right now is all we need. It just needs to be maintained. It's not going to be developed or anything right now. Because, you know, there's, it's just preservation. So in saying that, that's pretty much was the consensus and everything was, seemed to be agreed upon Monday night. So I still, in my mind, this, even though now these two resolutions are split for this coming Monday night, to me, in my mind, is still a package deal. I want both the properties. That's, that's what I see. So I don't, I think, I guess I think I covered everything. Do you have any questions?
I just want to make a comment as well. Thank you too. And there may be some more for you too. So stay up here, but please. But I also want to mention, a lot of people don't understand, and Mr. Hayes, you know, he came down on the process of this because of his, his desire to have his family name there for all of these years. And I mean, you think somebody says, well, that's a lot to spend on something, but this is planning. We're planning for the future. We know the growth's going to be there. If it hadn't, y'all wouldn't have approved the, what's coming there. And so if you wait to buy something or try to acquire it 10 years down the road, just think what it's going to cost. So, and so anyway.
And more than likely, if, if the city doesn't, I just want it to develop.
And we'll definitely need some more green space on that side.
Yes. Oh, and the poll, that's what it was. I did a poll with my constituents to see what their idea of parkland and green space is. The number one thing was park, was nature trails and parks, I mean, nature trails and walkways. The other, I had, I don't have the percentages with me, but lots of requests for amenities. Tennis courts, even a skate park. You know, something comparable to Charlie Daniels, inside basketball courts. I personally would like to see racquetball courts. But amenities, they want amenities. So that's, that's my vision, is this, we preserve it for the future. It's completely buildable and we, you know, just, we got plenty of time to plan for it. That's what I see.
You guys, I guess one quick question. Looking at the access point for the Thomason property on the Beckwith. I know we put, we got Bradshaw Farms coming out and this is adjacent to Bradshaw Farms. One of our biggest concerns for planning commission at Bradshaw Farms was the access point at Beckwith and Lebanon Road. Did you guys talk about that? Because I don't think the BLC, basically we were told there's really nothing we could do about that access point up there. But here we are about to put more people at that access point. We were so concerned about it, Beckwith Road and Lebanon Road because of the blind hill and the narrow road of Beckwith. And we're going to do it again, but this time with a park for more people. Did you guys talk about that at all?
Wasn't a lot of discussion because it's kind of understood that there is one excess. If it's, was also talked about that if the city purchases Thomason, Beazer is interested in 20 acres of it and they're, they would be willing to come in and put a road in.
I think I'd rather put a stoplight at Beckwith Road and Lebanon Road. Yeah, because that was one of, and I, my apologies, I can't remember without, you were part of Bradshaw Farms.
Yeah. And you know, I wanted that traffic signal too.
Yeah.
It didn't work out.
And here we're going to do it again on that one right there.
But with Beazer coming in, that, that may be, and I don't know this, that may be a requirement because I assume that's going to be several homes and I don't know that.
Beazer's actually looking at the Martinez property that has access to Lebanon Road on near west. And I think they might even connect to Kirk Road.
I mean, I like this Thomason property, there's no doubt. But here we are having a repetitive conversation about public safety at an access point that is, Mr. Barlow said, you got traffic data and rec data and all that other stuff. I guarantee you this one generates some pretty good data for you.
Most definitely. But I just wanted to make sure y'all know it's the Martinez property where that connection would be. Which is the City Limits Barber Shop. If you're familiar. Yeah. That's the Martinez property.
Well, that'd be a shame. They'd tear it down, wouldn't they?
I think he's going to keep that portion. He'll just keep the little commercial section for himself. That's his talk in previous developments. I don't know if it's the same for this Beazer. I haven't talked to anybody from Beazer about it.
I actually have a question for Gino. Gino, if they defer this tonight, does this make the BOC have to wait on the resolution, since it's a resolution, until their December 28th meeting?
Yes. They need a recommendation one way or the other from this group.
So our next meeting is December 17th. So the BOC wouldn't be able to act on it until December 28th. Just letting y'all know.
True.
If I may also comment, this is a comment obviously positive for, for Gino, which I've worked with for the last several years. And, and I'm not minimizing anything that he said. I think that with what Gino said, will have to be worked out with the new board on Monday night. And I think that needs to be in consideration because we've got a great attorney, city attorney, and he's not going to tell us something that we obviously don't need to, to listen to. So whatever he was talking about, y'all have to work out. But I, I still feel confident that y'all could do that between, him now, between now and Monday night. So, but we can't take, we can't just write what Gino, write off what Gino said. It has to be addressed and I'm sure y'all can do that. So thank you, Gino.
You're welcome.
And may I also say publicly, Gino, you, your firm has And may I also say publicly, Gino, you, your firm has represented us fantastic. It's been a pleasure. I have talked to Gino many times. I'm getting off a little bit, but this is planning, about planning and stuff in the city, and it's been, it's been excellent, and I appreciate you and your firm.
You're nice to say that. There's a smart lawyer in the office, Charles Michael. That helps a lot.
Can I just say one thing? The 20 acres that Beazer may be interested in on the Thomason property would connect with that, it's my understanding, would connect with that development.
Can I ask the one question? Please. So in your work group on Monday, did you discuss anything about the concerns Gino has about the contract?
The, we didn't like the, what was it, the, that you had in yours? Oh, the five-year thing about the city would pay the homeowner, if the city sold the property, they would pay, the city would pay the property owner $100,000 up to, what, was it 15 years?
The original, and this is about the sixth contract. This property, the original contract provided that if the city ever sold the property, the Hayes heirs would be allowed to buy it back for the same price. So if you paid a million five and you sold it 10 years later and it's worth $5 million, you only paid a million and a half. They could buy it back for a million and a half. We put in an escalator of $100,000 a year or something like that. But that's gone because they negotiated. It's going to be a park for 30 years, period. So you can't sell it.
With no buyback plan.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah.
Under the assumption, and obviously that in 30 years, there'll be infrastructure and stuff, and so most probably it'll remain a park.
Yeah.
Continuously, because it would be, it takes so much to buy.
Well, I can't imagine investing in pavilions and maybe even a community center and the city's going to sell it.
So 30 years is more time to acquire that type of infrastructure.
Right.
And so there's probably more of a guarantee that it's going to remain that park and that Hayes name will continue. That's, I think that's probably the thinking. 15 years goes by quick. I mean, I'm thinking, but.
Let's go ahead and do this, because this all could be an old void point.
Tell them a motion on the table.
Yeah. So, yeah.
We came out here 30 minutes ago.
Let me go ahead and do it right. Any citizen comments in regards, we have a motion for deferral with a second on the table. Any citizens wishing to make comment during this time, welcome to encourage you to do Seeing no citizen comments this time, your motion does still hold for deferral?
Again, I'm not debating whether or not they're good or bad.
Or whatever. I'm just wanting to defer, because I don't think the city commission's ready. That's just, it's that simple. That's what I think.
So motion, motion remains with the motion and second. Commissioner Sish?
Only one question about the deferral. Talk about contracts. It depends on when these contracts are due, are handed. Now, if I defer, that's going to interfere with that. That's what I need to know.
Will that kill the deal?
No.
Okay.
Look to make sure, I don't think the offer had a drop dead time, like you've got to respond within 10 days or anything. I don't think it did. And I'm looking quickly here, and I don't remember seeing that, and I don't see it now. Only hearing about time is closed within 120 days after you sign off on it. Why 30 years? After 30 years, the city owns it? That's it?
No, the city owns it from the time that they buy it.
But I mean.
It just has to be a park for 30 years.
It has to be a park for 30 years.
And then after that?
After that, the city can sell it if they wanted to.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But if, but if the city, between now and 30 years, if the city decides to do something else besides make a park out of it, the Hayes family has the right to buy that property back for.
No, they took that out.
It had a reverted clause that it goes back to them for nothing.
Like many, like many parcels of land does. I deal with churches, obviously, y'all know that. A lot of churches are that way.
If the city sells it in five years.
We all know that.
If the city sells it in five years, the family gets half a million dollars. City sells it 10 years, family gets a million dollars. If city sells it 15 years, family gets a million and a half dollars. If city sells it 16 years, they get nothing.
Under this contract as proposed, it can't be sold for 30 years.
Oh, can't be sold for 30 years.
If you quit using it as a park, it goes back to the Hayes family.
And in, for 15 years?
The 15 years is gone.
It's 30 years.
It's just a flat 30 years.
That's even more rational for your argument, is that the contract that we're looking at doesn't match the contract that we're voting on.
Again, I don't know what got submitted, if anything, but I'm looking at the one that showed up Tuesday morning at 11:48 from Mark Lineberry, which was supposed to have captured everything from Monday night, but.
So that means it's a contract that we're voting on the contract is basically what we're, where we're recommending or non-recommending the contract. And so basically, the contracts, this body is read in order to make this decision is incorrect.
That's what it looked like.
I have a motion and a second for deferral. All those in favor, signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye against abstentions is deferred. Is that going to be the only tabled item at that point in time for your deferral was item 7.1? So we need to bring 7.2 to the table and probably see if you should so choose, do the same for that, because we didn't, we weren't, we weren't hearing them the same. So let me, that was item 7.1 that was just deferred. Item 7.2 is the next item on our agenda. Item 7.2 is also a recommendation item back to the Board of Commissioners, is to review the Parks Land Purchase Request for the Thomason Property located on Beckwith Road. I have a motion to defer from Commissioner Franklin.
12 seconds.
I have a second on that. Ms. Hamblin, anything you wish to share?
After this.
After this? Fantastic. This time we'll call for citizen comments in regards to this item on our agenda. Any citizens wishing to make comment, are welcome and encouraged to do so. See no citizen comments this time. I've got a motion and a second for deferral of item 7.2. All those in favor, signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye against abstentions. That is deferred. Ms. Hamblin?
I just have a citizen comment that came through on my email for the meeting tonight, and I'd like to just read it for the record. It's from Jeff Loak in regards to the rezon request for 808 and 830 North Mount Juliet Road. He lives at 1422 Barrett Drive. He says he was unable to attend the meeting tonight, and he is opposed to the rezoning or our subdivision being negatively impacted. I just wanted to make sure that got included. Thank you.
Hey, we have a copy of the planning calendar. Is that just for our purposes, or is that something that we needed to take action on?
I think you guys approved it the last meeting or the meeting before.
Okay. I was just double checking to make sure. I thought so too, just making sure we, wasn't something that snuck in there.
Don't forget, you have to get with us about your continuing education.
Continuing education.
Yes, sir.
Very well.
That'll be a vote for the December meeting.
Very well. Thank you. Looking for a motion to adjourn. I'll second that. Got a motion from Commissioner Franklin, second. By me, all those in favor, signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye against abstentions.